Well, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Gig Harbor City Council Study Session of Thursday, December 1st, 2022. The time is 2:02 PM. And I will do a roll call. Councilmember Barber.
Here.
Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Liggins.
Here.
Councilmember Rothenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Storseth is excused. He may join us at some point this afternoon. If he does, I'll recognize him when he arrives. And Councilmember Look.
Here.
Okay, great. Six present. Um, thank you again, as I was mentioning before we were starting the recording. Thank you for being flexible for this being a virtual meeting. Out of an abundance of caution, we wanted to make sure that everybody attending this evening would be safe and warm in their homes and not having to drive on icy roads. So we will go um right into our first item. Josh, if you want to bring over Mark Burcar. I would like to introduce Mark Burcar to you, Council, and give you an opportunity after a brief introduction, give you an opportunity to ask him some questions. He is was our only applicant for the Planning Commission. And I had the honor of meeting him the last go around of applicants and I wanted to give you the opportunity to meet him. So I think.
He's coming on right now.
Okay, perfect.
I think I'm, let's see.
Yes, good afternoon, Mark.
How are you?
Good. Thank you for, thank you for your flexibility in us changing this meeting to virtual. I appreciate your flexibility there.
Well, it kind of worked out. I had to run up to Seattle, so um I'm halfway back from there now, so I'm joining you from my car. I'm not driving.
Good, that's good. As long, as long as you're not driving, that's good. Well, I wanted to give you a chance to meet the council, give your, give a little introduction about yourself, and then they'll get to ask some questions of you.
Okay, great. Should I start?
Yes, take it away.
Well, I'm, I'm Mark Burcar. I grew up in Gig Harbor. Uh, let's see, both my grandparents lived there, and my mom grew up in Gig Harbor, so I'm kind of a longtime resident. Um, and then we just moved away for a while, moved back in 2017. My wife and I, we have two little girls. Uh, one in middle school, one in grade school. Um, I'm a pilot for United Airlines. Um, done some work in um a little commercial real estate with some local developers in the past and construction. My dad was in construction. My brother's actually a planner, so I've got some exposure to the, uh, the works of the Planning Commission and, and kind of how we try to organize our communities and such and um and, and basically I've just kind of always had an interest in that, that, those type of things and um uh, enjoyed watching our um community grow but understand the challenges of it. And just kind of want to hope to help smooth that out and kind of maybe leave a little legacy for the uh, community as I pass that on to my kids. Hopefully a friendly, inclusive, and um nice place to live for many generations to come.
Thank you so much, Mark. Appreciate that. Council, um, do you have any questions for, for Mark? Councilmember Look.
Um, thank you. And Mark, nice to meet you and thanks for being with us today. I have, I have two questions. One sort of a follow-up to something that you mentioned in your introduction of yourself there. Uh, and about retail, about helping businesses and, and construction, and I, I noticed that John Hogan was a referral of yours in your application. And I'm wondering why, why he was an application, or he was a referral. What's your relationship with, with this developer?
Sure, John's a good friend of mine. I worked for him and his family um in between my time at the airline, so I was, um, I helped him out with um uptown Gig Harbor, the pre-development work and that. And so I've always respected John's kind of, I, he doesn't live in Gig Harbor now, but he grew up there also and his is kind of tied to the community and, and, and um the respect he has for the legacy there and what he's, what he's tried to, tried to, um, tried to do with the Gig Harbor area.
Thank you. And, and then my, my last question is, as a planning commissioner.
Why, this is a referral, but.
Okay, as a, as a planning commissioner, uh, do you think that a part of your job is to take into consideration the desires of our citizens when they speak before you?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, it's, uh, it's all our community, so I would, I would, uh, I would, I would hope people take the time to, uh, you know, voice their concerns and opinions and, and all that.
Thanks very much. That's all for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Barber.
Great. Hi, Mark.
Hi.
Um, my question relates, it's similar to what Councilmember Luke was just asking. And I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit about how, as a planning commissioner, you would balance the the, the desire to maintain the maritime feel of the city that you grew up in with the growth that we've seen over the past few years and we're probably going to continue to see. So how do you balance those two things together for the good of the city?
Well, well, I think it's, I think we're definitely going to see the growth. I mean, there's, there's probably, you know, like death and taxes is somewhat unavoidable at this point. Um, but I, I, it's, um, it, the challenge, it seems to me, is, is as, as the growth, um, the pressure of growth becomes more apparent, of course, you know, your value of the land becomes more, more, um, more of a factor, and I think it's going to be important for us to try to preserve, you know, the open spaces and um and things like that under those pressures and that, that, that it's still, we're maintaining a livable community and not a, not a, not a sprawling, um, um, you know, not a sprawling um mass with, you know, the associated traffic effects and things like that. So uh, there'll be hard decisions. I mean, that probably won't make everybody happy all the time, um, but that, that's kind of the, uh, the task of, um, of planning from a community standpoint is, is um looking, looking at the future and down the road and not um uh, what's what I'm looking for, not uh making short-term decisions. I think it's, it's important to maintain the law, look down the long term and um what we want to preserve for the long term.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilmember Rothenberg.
Hi, Mark. Nice to meet you. As you can probably tell by some of the questions, anytime a person's name is slightly related to the word developer, which has got a bad reputation in Gig Harbor, everyone is at alert. So uh, therein lies, I think, some of the questions that you're getting. So uh.
I understand.
So, so that means that uh for no valid reason at one point, you're going to be under a microscope to make sure that you're not leaning one way or another. So, I mean, that's probably not a, a secret to you. I'm sure you know that. Uh, but I, I look forward to you be on a, on the planning commission and your knowledge and your background. Uh, secondly, you mentioned you had some children. How old are they?
Uh, eight and, and eleven, eight and eleven, two girls, yeah. One's at Harbor Ridge and the other goes to Purdy.
Are they active in sports in Gig Harbor?
Yep. Uh, we have a, the older one's a soccer player and the younger one is um into gymnastics right now.
The older one was playing in the snow last night.
Exactly, she was.
But it's, it's great to hear. And again, Mark, I'm glad to see you on the planning commission.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mark or, or comments? Okay, well, Mark, thank you again so much for, for being with us and um uh, our city clerk, Josh Decker, will be in touch with you shortly.
Okay, great. Well, thanks for your time and please, if anybody has any other questions, um, feel free to contact me.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Drive safely back.
Thank you.
Okay, bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
All right, so moving uh on to our second item of business is our council guidelines and procedures revisions discussion. And this report comes to us from our city clerk, Josh Sticker.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just start off with the memo that I sent to council as part of the packet for this. Um, this, this update is kind of a collection of things that we've been talking about over the last, I guess it's been about six months since we did our last update in April. Um, a lot of these revisions will have come from the two retreat sessions that council held back in September, so those have been uh formally incorporated into this, and we'll go over those in a minute. Um, and then there's been some other procedural things that have come up. Um, there's been requests from individual council members. There's been some things that we've identified as staff that we'd like to see proposed changes to, and then just some things that we've discussed in council meetings. So the goal of this was to try to collect all of those and get them all into one update for council guidelines and get it ready for uh council to approve at the next council meeting on December 12. Um, so with that, I will pull up a copy of it with the changes, and we can go through them and answer any questions or go over any recommendations that you have or things you'd like to see differently. Are you all able to see my screen okay?
Uh, yes, I believe so.
Okay. All right, uh, let me take it back up to the top. Um, so we'll just revise the uh, we'll just do a clean new version of the guidelines. So when we adopt it by resolution, what you'll see with the resolution is a brand-new version. Um, so these strikeout and underlines that we're going through today, we will just make those part of the official documents. So the, the version that you adopt won't have these in them. So we'll go over them now, and then if there are any changes we need to make, um, we'll do that before they go into the final version. Um, section one, uh, Councilmember Luke, I see you have your hand up.
Yes, do you want, if we have, I, I have two questions. Do you want us to wait until the end of, you go through this whole thing, or do you want to stop when we're on a particular page?
Now, let's, let's stop as we go along and, and go through each thing.
Thank you.
Yep. Uh, so this first revision here, this is a change to Article 1 Purpose and Scope. This was presented to you at the September meeting. Um, had consensus of council to be included in the next update. Um, so it's just here as it was when you reviewed it in September. So if there are any additional comments on that section, we can take those now. Otherwise, we'll go with what you proposed back then.
And Josh, can you see hands raised, or do you want me to call in?
I can see hands, so yeah, if you want me to just call on them, I can do that.
Perfect, thanks.
All right, not seeing any comments on this section, I'm just going to keep going. This section here was also a new section that was presented at the retreat. This is your public service agreements. Um, this is how council will uh conduct themselves. This is largely about council relations outside of your meetings. Um, and I see, uh, Councilmember Luke has her hand raised.
I do. Uh, I thought we were going to uh include in here about gestures. Um, and I think that um city administrator Knudsen said that gestures would be included. I haven't seen uh any knowledge, any, anything in here about uh not gesturing, making gestures. Uh, is it in here? And I have missed it.
I believe there may be something uh in our section six, which is council communications, or the way council communicates with each other.
Okay, I'll, I'll wait for that then.
Yeah, keep that in the back of your mind. I don't remember exactly how we addressed that, but I believe it's in there, so.
Yeah, Councilmember Luke, if we haven't addressed that and you'd like to talk about it more at the end, um, we'll put it on our little parking lot list.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Councilmember Henderson.
Um, yeah, just a number two, maybe re, uh, fix that word, regrain to refrain.
Oh, yeah, cut that. My, sorry, with my track changes, I don't catch all the typos, so the final version will be a lot cleaner. Apologize for that. Um, and that number two may also speak somewhat to what Councilmember Luke was asking for communication to be done respectfully, kindly, and directly um between council members.
Councilmember Luke, does that um intimidating, refraining from intimidating behaviors, does that get to the intent of your your comment?
Okay, no.
Okay. Uh, moving on to section two, article two, um one of the things that we've heard from a, a few of your council members about is the way that we conduct oral and written comments during council meetings. Um, so this section on public comment, which applies to public comment, um, both the non-agenda and the formal agenda comments has been changed. Um, basically, it's been rewritten to say that we will not accept on-the-record written comments. Written comments can be sent to mayor and council at gigharborlot.gov, um, just as any other comment can be sent to council. Um, this change would make it so that comments, so that people can't have their comments read aloud at the meeting, which has caused a little bit of confusion. Um, it also makes it so that people's comments won't be published as part of the packet for meetings, unless it's part of a formal public hearing. Um, if we're doing an actual public hearing, we have special guidelines for that, for how those comments are taken. The uh, the confusion with public comment has kind of been going on since we made this change in April. We get a lot of people that, that know the rules or read the agenda and know they're supposed to put the words for public comment and send it to the city clerk. Um, we get people that just hear by word of mouth that they're just supposed to say for the record, and um, there's been all kinds of confusion about which comments are public record comments and which comments are not. Um, and we think that this change will probably clear that up for a lot of people. And I see Councilmember Luke again.
So will public comments be allowed to be read at any time during our uh council meetings?
Not with this change, no.
So I'm not in favor of this change? I think if our citizens want to send a, I, I thought that they weren't allowed, was it when we were having a public hearing or something, but, but if they wrote something in and they, uh, on a particular issue, then then they could ask for a public comment, that their public comment be read? Um, I, I would like their public comment if they, if they have something that's important to be read, as long as it doesn't go over three minutes.
Katrina, did you want to speak to this, or, or one of the other reasons why we had considered this change was complaints about how the comments were read, and some people were getting offended because they weren't read with the amount of emotion or inflection that they were.
Okay, the, the primary reason for this change is that it came to be during the COVID-19 pandemic, when we were meeting remotely, where folks could not show up in person. Now with the ability for any citizen to show up in person or, and/or show up on Zoom, now that we're hybrid, um, the, the reading of public comments out loud um is no longer um required because people can show up. Additionally, we have received complaints from commenters that had written comments that either the mayor or Josh or the city administrator was not reading them with the um inflection that they had meant in their letter. Or um that it was read too fast or it was read too slow. Um, other legal issue for this is that at any time, a soundbite of a staff member reading a comment can be taken out of context. Um, either in a newspaper, um, radio, et cetera. And so we want to make sure that the public comments are being stated by the public and not seen as um city staff being supportive one way or another of a written comment. I will also state that um the council always does accept written comments um to the mayor council email, and I know you receive them a lot. Um, but for anyone who's wishing to provide testimony at a city council meeting, um, that will be done by um, either coming to the meeting and testifying in front of council or utilizing the hybrid option where they could come in via Zoom and make their comment um in that manner. Thank you, Mayor.
I, I still have concerns about this of our, our public, especially for anyone who has ADA issues. I mean, I guess that it's pretty easy to Zoom nowadays, but sometimes people are not the best at Zooming nowadays, and sometimes uh people can't always make it to our meetings. Uh, and they have something that's important that they want to have read in the record, and I don't know why we wouldn't want them. Why we don't want their voice to be read into the record if they're not able to attend a Zoom meeting or attend in person? Why don't we want their words? Uh, uh, and, and they should not be complaining to our staff about how the, how the letters are read. Uh, I mean, you're reading words, that's what they are, and, and, and the inflection is not up to you. The, you know, they, they, they're words that come in. It's I'm, I'm sorry that anybody would complain to you about that. I don't think that's obviously fair, but.
That, that gets to the, some of the legal issues with having staff reading the comments. I will say that if comments are sent to the city council, you obviously receive them. They can ask for the city clerk to have them um attached to the packet for a specific item. Um, and then, you know, we need to make sure that we're giving, you know, equal access to every citizen, so they can call in from their phone, they can zoom in via computer, or they can show up in person, and those three ways we feel are providing accessibility to all of our citizens.
Okay, I, I, I still don't like this. Thank you.
Councilmember Liggins?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, so they have the option of showing up in person, going by Zoom, and they can also telephone into Zoom, correct? If they don't want to, and they could do it on a phone, for example, or they could have someone else read it for them, correct?
Yes, those are all options available.
And if they request the letter, you know, be a part of the packet, and then we see it on that agenda item, that's also available to all of the public that would look at that as well, correct? So, okay, so to me, I, I hear your concerns about the legal aspects of it, and I think you know, I'm an ADA advocate, but I do think there are ways that this can be done, and, and I am a little bit concerned about having staff read things for people, you know, and not do it to the inflection and things. I'm, I'm okay with this change. I, I'm curious what others think, though, as well, in addition to Jenny and I. Thanks.
Councilmember Rothenberg?
Yes, I agree with this change, uh, but I'm a little not, necessarily, I don't, I hate to say I'm confused. Uh, but it's going to be only on agenda items. So if they see the packet, they see what's on the agenda, then they write something, and they want it included in the packet. Uh, isn't that like after the fact, the packet's already out? But I think, I think the fact that if they wish, and if they state they want it in the packet, I think that's sufficient uh for being on the record, so to speak. Everybody that looks at it online, uh, every other citizen that looks, cares enough to look at the packet will see this person's comments. So uh, I I don't see anywhere here where we tell them specifically that they need to tell us they want it in the packet. But I, I think in general, uh, this is a, a very good change, and it can save some time and make things run smoother. Thank you.
So just to clarify, this change would, the way this is written, we would not accept written comments for the packet. Uh, we would accept written comments to mayor and council, um, so you would all see the written comments. They wouldn't be part of the public record. Um, and the reason that it's written this way is because we did have a number of issues that came up worse. Two sides were lobbying in on one issue, and one side knew to say the magic words for the public record, and their comments were getting printed, and one side didn't know those magic words. And their, their comments were not getting printed, and there were some complaints about that. Um, so just to not have that confusion, um, we've basically eliminated the, the option of having it be part of the public record.
So it's, so it's not going to be in the packet?
No, we don't. The way this is written currently, there's not an option to have it be part of the packet. But if that's, if council would like to see it that way and have people have the option to say, please publish my comments, we can do that. Um, the, the issue we have with that is that when we have an issue, like say fireworks, where we have people commenting on both sides, um, unless we have something that says, this is what you have to say, you have to say in your comments for the public record, um, we can't assume that someone wants their comments published. So we have the issue of, you know, some people sending in their comments, thinking they're going to be published but not having done it correctly, and then they don't get published, because we're not going to publish someone's comments unless we have their okay to do so.
And Josh, if I could further provide some, some clarity regarding, I know there's confusion regarding public comment versus public hearing. And so the reason why we take written comments and leave, put them in the record for a public hearing is that we're required to retain um, those comments for a certain period of time pursuant to the Public Records Act. And those are typically regarding something of a legislative manner that we would need to be able to produce a record of those things that are for public comment. Um, I think it's important to remember that when citizens are emailing you, they're emailing you as their representative for the government. It's not necessarily for um, all of the public to see. And so you are receiving the comments from citizens at mayor and council um email, and therefore that's your citizens telling you how they would like for you to vote.
Thank you, Katrina and Josh. Um, Councilmember Barber?
Yes, thank you. Um, I am in support of this change. I know that there was a lot of confusion this fall about um the, the way that it was written this summer and this fall. And I think that this does still allow people to be able to provide comment. Um, I know when we get an email about, when we start getting emails about issues, well, even when we get any, I start files about, say, fireworks, and I keep all of those emails in that file so that when it's time to have the discussion at the meeting, I can refer back to all of those, me, all of those emails and know what people were saying. Um, I don't know that with Zoom and in-person and the ability to phone versus being on the, on the internet, I think that we're providing a lot of accessibility for the meetings. And it just, it seems to me that sending an email to all of us, as was just mentioned, is a way to provide public comment. It just doesn't go in that individual packet, but it's still available to the public. So I'm in support of the change, the way that it's presented here.
Thank you. Councilmember Look?
So, so I would like to see them attached in the packet, and um because, because our citizens pay for this government, it's their tax dollars that pay for this building, that pay our salaries, that pay for this government, and I think that if we're not uh acknowledging them somehow, it is, it, it is a poor showing of uh a, a poor responsibility, accountability to them, and respect to them and their words. So if we're not going to have them read, uh, which I, I get that nobody wants, um, I, I would like to see them attached. I'd like to see them somehow attached. They may want other people to read what they have to say, and that's fine. And if they don't ask, if they don't say those specific words, to have them be attached to a packet on the record, whatever those words are, then no one should feel badly about not attaching them, because they have to say those words. It's like any of us. But um, sometimes we have to say the appropriate words, but I, I would like to see them attached.
Thank you, Councilmember Rothenberg.
Yes, after city administrator Knudsen's comments about the difference between a, a public meeting and a, and a hearing, uh, I now don't think they're necessary to be in the packet. So I'm not supporting it being in the packet, now that I know the difference. They are, they send those emails uh to mayor and council for us to consider and, and help us know what the public wants. Maybe we should vote that way. So uh, and it's not necessarily for everyone to see, so I don't advocate it being in the packet any longer.
Okay, thank you. So it, it sounds like the majority of council is fine with the way that it is here. Is that what I'm thumbs up, head nods, is that what I'm hearing? Okay, so we'll leave this section as is, and then, um, and Josh, feel free to move on, and thank you all for your comments on this.
All right, I will continue on in article two. Um, the next section that we've updated, I just want to make one quick note here, uh, procedurally on the land acknowledgement statement. Um, we've been reading that at the beginning of our meetings for a while now, and it was pointed out that we have a, a little bit of like a grammatical change that we think we need to make to it. Um, we've been reading that at the beginning of our meetings for a while now, and it was pointed out that we have a little bit of like a grammatical change that we think we need to make to it. Um, the way it reads is before we begin this council meeting, we would like to recognize that we are gathered on not only the ancestral and traditional lands of the Skobopch Band of the Pual tribe Indians. But also on the site of one of the largest and longest standing historic villages of their people. Uh, the original inhabitants of the Gig Harbor area, uh, originally that read the people. Uh, without referencing what the the was, and I believe it should be their people, uh, referencing back to the Pual tribe and the Skobopch Band. Um, so we've made that tiny, uh, type of graphical error there, uh, just to get that right on the record.
We know that that, um, language went under, um, a lot of. Uh, work between folks, and we want to be sensitive to. Having that meaning stayed, but I think that minor change helps us to be a little more grammatically correct and doesn't change the the meaning or the intent.
I've taken out one sentence on the posting of agendas, um, that says that they'll be posted on the meetings bulletin board. Our meetings bulletin board has always been by the back door, it's at the civic center, um, and by state law, we're actually supposed to require. We're required to post special meeting agendas on the front door of the building. Um, so we're going to come up with a new solution, but for now, um, I think we can just take that out and we will. Um, obviously comply with the OPMA says as far as posting meeting agendas, but, uh, we don't need to have this in council guidelines anymore. Uh, we haven't made any changes to Article Three on council committees, those will be ad hoc committees if we, uh, determine we need some at some point down the road. Uh, no changes to the mayor, uh, pro tem. Uh, advisory boards, we've made a couple of, uh, revisions here. This paragraph here on, um, the ad hoc committee for council appointing the advisory board members. Uh, we've been through this in the last six months, and now this is a mayor appointed function, so that paragraph's no longer needed. Um, we've made a note that candidates will be deemed appointed after their approval and confirmation by city council. And we just made the clarification that that's on the consent agenda of a regular city council meeting.
Josh, can we add a sentence in there, just, um. I know that these are the council's guidelines, but essentially outlining that it is our intention to bring forward. The candidate for the city council to. Interview at a work session, I think that that was important to council members.
Uh, yeah, let me, we can put something like that in there.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, council's fine about it, I'll just come up with some language and put it in for the final version.
I see heads nodding, so I think that's a yes, okay.
That that will also appear on the, um, administrative process for how we make the appointments, but we can have it in here as well. Uh, vacancies, we've taken away the provision here that met that a member may be removed by the council. Uh, based on the best interest of the city, since it's an appointed position. Um, technically, that's the mayor's purview to remove someone, um, and then we've just. In this paragraph here about how the mayor does removals, we've added that the the mayor may make the determination to remove someone, um, if it's in the best interest of the city. And made the note that the removal should not occur for disagreement with an official recommendation of the board or its members. Um, so that keeps the removal and appointment process with the mayor as it should be, um, and just clarifies how that works.
And council, if I could provide a little more background on this, not to belabor the point, but previously to the co- to, um, this code change. Uh, or this change, if, for instance, a commissioner of a certain border commission was not. Didn't show up to a meeting for four months or something. Um, previously, staff would have to come to council in a public meeting and state. On a council bill that we want these this person to be removed from this commission because they haven't been present and. Uh, I won't say it's not humane, but it did not seem appropriate to run someone's name through, um, the mud that way, so. We feel that this will allow us to handle those matters in a more discreet manner, um, and of course, move people apprised.
Hey, uh, one of the small things that we that we've added to the, uh, commission. Section is that their elections for their chair should be held at the first regular meeting of each year. Um, they've kind of been bouncing around between committees about when they do their chair elections. Um, we had an issue with the planning commission where they wanted to do their elections every July because they have new members in June. And sometimes we can't always get people appointed right away when terms expire, so. Um, January, uh, holding elections in January works well because none of the boards have any terms that expire after September, so. By January, the boards should have a pretty full roster, and they should have all been in position for at least three months, so they. Should be able to make a good decision about who the chair should be. Um, so this makes it uniform for each of the committees, and I think that will will help them, uh, clarify some confusion for them. Uh, we've added a small section for advisory board comments, um, advisory boards are now by OPMA required to take. Uh, public comments anytime they have a regular business meeting and they're discussing business. Um, so this section just says that they're required to have a public comment period, um, just like councils. Comment period for non-agenda items at least once in each of their meetings. Um, and it just provides the same guidelines that you use in council, the three minute time limit, um, and those other provisions. Mostly advisory boards, I think, already had a public comment period, so not really a change for them so much, but just to get it in the in the guidelines. Uh, Article Six is the communication section, um, this is some updates, a lot of it is coming from, what was it, your retreat? Um, I can go through some of them. Uh, fairly quickly here, um, one thing that we've changed is, um. Personal email accounts and texting, this is for council member communications, personally email accounts and texting from personal phones should not be used. When communicating with each other, staff or residents on city business. So just a reminder, um, and bringing, giving it a more forceful shout, that you really need to use your city devices when you're conducting city business. Uh, Councilmember Henderson?
Yeah, Josh, thanks. In reference to guidance that had been given out recently about. City council members chatting with prospective, uh, new city council members. I think we were told to use our personal devices for that, is, um, is that? At least in my mind, that would be conducting city business, or maybe not. What?
Yeah.
Finds what city business is in this particular case?
Well, yeah, city business can be difficult to determine at times, and especially in this case where we're where we're where we're going to have a vacancy on city council. Um, what our city attorney has told us is that. If you're just in general, uh, right now, if you're just in general letting people know, hey, we're going to have a vacancy on city council, this is how you apply. That would count as city business, if you have a friend or someone that you know closely that you want to talk to about having, seeing if they want to get on city council. That crosses then over into the personal side of things, so if you want to talk about. Your, you know, your agenda or the things you want to accomplish on council, or what their platform could be, or, you know, that kind of thing. That's at that point, that that's on a personal level, so. Um, that's one issue that there's kind of not a real black and white line there, or so. Um, but our our attorney has said that, you know, if it's going to cross it up. On that personal side, then you should, you should be using your personal devices for that. Okay.
Most election activities, either in support or, um, against a candidate, are not technically city business. Uh, however, when it comes to, you know, the council, and once we receive applications and you're reviewing them, and you're going through a formal city process. That crosses into city business territory. So as Josh said, it's it's a little bit complicated, and we're more than happy to to help any of you, um, through that.
Yep. Uh, six point three is changed a little bit, uh, for communications with the public, we've just added a section that says you should be mindful of the new sections we've put in Article One. Um, when you're communicating with the public, uh, Councilmember Likens?
Yeah, thanks, I had a question, um, on the last topic, it talks about emails and texting. Which, of course, we should be doing from our city phone on city business. Can we make a phone call from our personal cell, though, that's not something that is a record or recorded?
Yeah, the the intent of this is that any records that you create need to be on a city device or something that the city has access to. So if you're, if you're using your city email on a personal phone, that's fine, because we keep all of those records, if you're just making phone calls from your phone. That's fine with the caveat that at some point you may need to provide a call log or some kind of whatever record your phone might keep. Um, but really, it to the extent that we provided you the equipment to do, to do, uh. City business, that's what you should be using.
Yeah, 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 sometimes my, um, personal cell is hooked up on my car, and if someone calls me, I answer it. On my car, so.
Yeah.
We just, and then I'm like, do I call him back on my city phone, and I'm driving, and yeah, so that's where it gets confusing, thank you.
Yeah, the key one here is is texts from personal phones, because those are very difficult to deal with from a records perspective, so. If you can keep, if you can reduce those, that is, that's the goal here.
Okay, great, thanks.
All right.
I would caveat that with, um, not do the texts. We'd like, if you're going to do texts, we're not encouraging you not to reach out to your constituents. But do so on your city phone where they can be adequately. Um, what's the word, uh, given for public records purposes? Because having to go through your personal devices for city business can be very cumbersome and very tricky.
All right, uh, we're moving on to communications with staff, um. So we've added a little bit of a section here at the beginning, the city administrator is the primary point of contact between council and staff. Um, just driving home the point that really Katrina should be your first call if you need something. Um, you can always contact department directors to talk about specific things. Um, but even as department directors, we're going to relay everything to Katrina as well, so. Really Katrina should be your for- first point of contact on things. And it's, it's really important that we keep her in the loop so that she knows what we're doing, and and she knows what, you know, each of us are up to. Um, and then this section here down here, down here in the red, this is what was originally a separate section from the retreat. Um, it talks about how to treat staff as professionals, clear and honest communication, um. Be never attacking or demeaning employees, um. I think this was pretty well covered, uh, during this, the retreat session, and this is what council had consensus to move forward with. Uh, oh, and then we've added this other section about contacting staff members about agenda bills. Um, so anything that's in a council meeting or a study session, if there's an agenda bill. Um, go ahead and reach out to that staff person ahead of time and and get, uh, your questions answered from them before the meeting, uh, whenever possible.
And I would caveat that too, and I don't know if it needs to be put in here, but, you know, council member noted that there was a dent in a trash can. Um, or, you know, minor things like that, um, and we can obviously work through that, but. You know, those things are fine to go directly to staff, you know, or if you see a light that, a light that's out, you need to let Jeff know, uh, you know. I mean, there's some discretionary things here, but as Josh noted, um, it's it's important for, we have a lot of work to get done. Um, on the budget, and it's important that we're able to do it in a, a methodical and well thought out manner.
All right, that takes us through Section Six, and I'll just make a quick note here, it's two forty-five, at three o'clock, we scheduled the Parks Commission to be on. Um, so if we don't get through this whole council guidelines by then, I think, um, mayor will probably want to take a break and invite the Parks Commission in.
Yes, and then we can either, um, come back to it at the end of the meeting, because I think we'll have time.
Yeah.
So, yeah, uh, Councilmember Runenberg and Councilmember Wick have their hands up.
Okay, Councilmember Runenberg?
Yeah, just going back to page twenty-nine about, uh, council members should not solicit any type of political support. Uh, if someone is running for an office, uh, I guess, and it talks about. Mon's signs and things like that, uh, if one of my fellow council members is running. Uh, does that mean I have to tell them I want one, they can't solicit me to have one, or they can't solicit me for money? Or?
This is, this is more stating that council will not solicit from city staff support for any political office.
Okay, but if city staff comes forward without the solicitation, is that okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wick?
Uh, yes, yes, uh, on six point five lobbying efforts. Uh, this has to do with, uh, what I was asking, uh, Josh Wees the other night about. Um, uh, lobbying, council members should not lobby on behalf of the city or legislative or political matters unless the. City council is formally taking the position on that, I certainly get that. Um, I I have a little bit of, uh, logistics issue, I guess, if we need to get. I mean, Josh has said, if something comes up on Thursday and they ask us to speak on this on on Friday. Uh, how do we get, what are the logistics for getting, um, council to agree with that? Um. Uh, so that that can, so that that can be, so that that person, council person can speak. Uh, at the, in Olympia, how, what are the logistics for, um, getting the council approval? I understand about the the issues, and that makes perfectly sense, I just need to know the logistics of how that, of how the other part of it works.
Well, the the only way that can happen is if council agrees on something, in order for council to do that, you would have to have a meeting of some kind. Either one of your study sessions or a special meeting or or a regular meeting, so if something does come up and it's urgent and it needs. City action, um, it should be addressed to Katrina or or the mayor, and then they can make that determination if we need to convene council and get direction.
A caveat. Go ahead, Josh, sorry, I thought you were finished.
Oh, I was just, council can't make any position unless they do it in an open meeting, so that's, that's the, that's the catch.
So the legislative agenda, however, was done in an open meeting, so you have said that you want these capital, um, expenditures, you've said. All of those lists of support and oppose. Um, and so if any of those measures come up where we need to testify, then council has already said, yes, we support this, yes, we oppose this, and therefore. A council member could go down on behalf of the city, and we would definitely work together on that.
So we don't have to come back?
No.
Okay, thank you, that was my question, really, thanks.
Good question.
Uh, Councilmember Runenberg?
Yes, uh, as council members, uh, we are legislators ourselves. So is this mean that we cannot solicit the public or other, uh, to encourage residents to call? Other legislators or other council members? Is that, or is this only for state and federal?
I mean, this is specifically for state legislation, and I can make that clear in the section, but. Um, the RCW that we're citing here, forty-two seventeen. Um, the way that the city council members and elected city officials interact with the state legislature is very prescribed. Um, so this is, this is regarding your relationship with the state legislature. So we as a city and you as council members cannot encourage people to. Uh, take a grassroots effort to reach out to legislators or or provide comment like that, so. That's, that's what this is addressing.
Yeah, thank you.
A good, a good example of that was the missing middle issue that we dealt with during last legislative session. There was an idea to put, um, something on our website or Facebook, you know, contact you were. Um, you know, contact Emily, Jessie and Michelle about this, because the city's concerned about that, and we cannot do that. As the city, um, I will say with the caveat, you are obviously an independent citizen away from your council member. Um, seat, and so, you know, it's care, you obviously can. You know, do personal lobbying and talk to people about that, you just can't as a council member do that.
Councilmember Likens?
Yeah, um, I just wanted to clarify, just one more question on that, and I should just probably read the RCW. But sometimes we, people come to us with an issue that, for example, is a county issue. Or a state issue like Highway sixteen, or, you know, different things, we can still refer them to the state legislature because it's their. Area of purvey, so to speak, that's fine to do, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that would be fine, this is, this is more about specific legislation.
And lobbying, okay.
Specific lobbying on a, on a specific thing that's before the legislature.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure I didn't break that one, so, thanks.
All right, uh, moving on from Article Six, Article Seven is the proclamation policy, which uh we don't have any proposed changes to. Um, we've been working with that since April and it seems to be working pretty well. Uh, Article Eight, this is council vacancies, which is going to be a, a new or a. A point of interest in the next month or two. Um, we now officially have a council vacancy. Councilmember Denson has officially given us her notice of resignation for the end of the year. And so in January, we will be looking to fill a vacancy. Um, this section is largely a copy and paste of a policy that has been in place in council since two thousand thirteen on the, on the process for doing this. Um, it's been updated a little bit based on our last round of uh. Interviews that we did to fill the vacancy uh when Mayor Markley became Mayor Markley. I'm gonna point out here, if I can find really quickly, just some of the key changes we've done.
Josh, I have a question on the first paragraph before you keep going.
Sure, go ahead.
So it says in eight point one in the last sentence of the first. Paragraph, it says pursuant to state law vacancy shall be filled only until the next regular election to serve the remainder. The term, so does this mean that the person who is appointed? Um, to the position, let's pretend like. Robin's term was not already up at the next cycle, would that person then run in the subsequent cycle regardless of whether or not? The term was up?
Uh, no.
So they would run for two partial, they would be appointed for a partial and then run for a partial?
No, they, they would be appointed for the full term. So say council member Denson had three years to go, whoever was appointed that position would serve for three years. Before needing to run for election.
I think we need to clarify that then to say the next regular election for that position or something. Because to me, the way this is written right now, it says that the person who's appointed will definitely have to run. The next time there is a municipal election.
Yeah.
Even if that seat isn't up.
I can make that clarification.
Okay, thank you.
The one interesting part about the person, for instance, that takes Robin's position, they will serve. From January first until November when the election is certified. And so that's different than if one of your positions, for instance, was sunsetting. So the, the newly elected person for Robin's position next year will take office presumably in late November.
Yes. Similar to, similar to what happened with, with my position because I was um. Appointed, I took a short term oath from the end of, from the certification of the election through January. First or through December thirty-first, I guess, at midnight, and then a long term oath. So this person will do the same thing. If, if they choose to run again, or run, I'm sorry, for the first time after being appointed, then they would. Do the exact same thing and they would. Take a short term oath and then they would take a four-year long term oath, should they be elected. Kind of confusing, but Josh will keep us all in line.
Yeah. Second, section eight point two, this section I don't think has changed much, if at all, from the policy. Um, it's just saying that once there's a vacancy, basically that's when the city clerk's office goes into action and we start noticing. Uh, city clerk's office develops the application and gets it posted and collects the applications. Um, the interview process has changed a little bit and. We kind of mixed things up when we did the last round of interviews about how the questions were collected and, and posed, and we've had a recommendation that. Um, city administrator uh Katrina has put forward as well on how we do our interviews. Um, basically, we will collect all the applications, the applications will say, and all the applicants will be expected to attend one interview meeting. Um, so we won't be individually scheduling appointments for each person that applied, as they'll all be required to be at the same meeting. Um, and then the beginning of that meeting, the new proposed structure. Is that each applicant will be given three minutes to introduce themselves, um, state their case for why they want to be on council. Um, and then at that point, once everyone has had a few minutes, um, and council, of course, has had the opportunity to review their applications. Um, at that point, each council member would be asked to provide four names of the four people they would like to see move forward for more formal interviews. Um, and they're on the spot, then we'll collect those names and come up with the top four. Um, applicants who, who have received the most um nominations. And proceed to interview those four people. Um, that would give council a candidate of four finalists to choose from, uh, when we go through the voting process. The idea is, is that this will all occur in one meeting, um, so we won't have to reschedule and have people come back. Um, everyone will know that the process is occurring on a specific date, uh, that's set in. Uh, ahead of time, so we won't have an issue of having people not be available. But that's, that's the procedure that we proposed here. Um, there's questions on that. I see Councilmember Henderson has his hand raised.
Yeah, just a question on. So for this upcoming one to replace Councilmember Denson. January fifth is gonna be the interviews, and then we're also voting on that same day?
Yeah, that is the, that's the proposed timeline for this one. So, uh, January fifth, which is a Thursday afternoon. Um, we would have all, the application that we put out would let everyone know that that's the time to be there. If you're applying for this position, you need to be available to be there, to be interviewed for that, at that meeting. Um, and then at that point, we would do the interviews, conduct the, conduct the interviews, conduct the more formal interviews with the four finalists. And then um convened executive session as necessary, um, just. To discuss the qualifications of the candidates, um, and then at that point, council would, would vote on who they want to see uh go forward.
Okay, is that date fixed in regulatory terms or can that move at all?
Uh, that date is up to the mayor and council to set. We've come up with that date because that gives us time to get someone elected and, and. In position before the first regular meeting in January, which I believe is January ninth. Um, so we do want to try to get that vacancy filled before we have a regular meeting, so we're not um meeting with. Less than a full council. Um, but really, it's, it's up to council's convenience on that.
Councilmember Barber.
Um, yes, I'm wondering about, um, I really like this process of having the people make a short presentation and then. Shall we say narrowing it down? I'm wondering about the number four, and I'm wondering if there's a way that we could. Say it's half the number of applicants or something so that. If we only have four applicants and we would want to choose fewer than that. Uh, it seems like I'd rather, I'd rather have a little bit of flexibility there. Um, to make, to change the number, or maybe we say we set that number at the beginning of the meeting or something. Something like that. I didn't know if there was a way that it, there was a way we could be flexible on that number.
I think we could say no more than four or a number set by council at the. During, or at the beginning of the meeting. Josh, what do you think about that?
Uh, I think council could set the number at, at the meeting or during the meeting, um. Yeah.
Yeah, we can make that modification.
Okay, thank you.
And I don't want to take total credit for this. I did have two council members that called me about. That they saw a process of another city and wanted to know if we could update ours, so. Anyway.
Councilmember Liggins.
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, I was, I was one of the two that kind of recommended this process. I just wanted to. Or at least a change to the process. Katrina made it magical in, in the words here and Josh. Um, with the process, you know how we're each gonna put forth a question? Um, for them to answer and do it in a um, what I would call a forum. Type of interview process. Um, is that still the plan where they would all be in the same room? That's what it is from what I could tell. Where each person alternates, who gets the first questions. So for those of us is run, it's kind of like the League of Women Voters Forum. Or that type, that's, is that?
Yes. Yes, that's, that's the intent of this, and again, it goes to making it fair and equitable at the, you know, the previous time, the first candidate. Since it's a public meeting, the other candidates could hear all of the questions that were being asked. And so this way makes it fair for all of the candidates. They're each getting one question first and then. Having an opportunity to hear others make their comments on later.
Yeah, that, that was exactly my intent. So if others have thoughts on this, um, pro or con, I'd love to hear it. So, thanks.
So, um, Josh, it is three oh two. Should we put, uh, just pause, I know we're almost through this. Do you want to? Um. Finish out whatever your changes were, and then we'll come back at the end for council additions or subtractions that are throughout the entire document?
Yeah, let me just quickly look through here. I think the, the rest of. The changes are just adding that section, so um at that point, that pretty, pretty much sums up the changes we proposed. Um, so maybe later in the meeting, we could come back and, and wrap up with any comments that council has on it. Um, and get this ready for the next meeting.
Great, and then how about we take a five-minute break while you bring over everybody from the uh Parks Commission? Does that sound good?
Okay, I will do that.
Okay, so we'll come back at three oh eight and I, I'm sorry, is it Parks or Arts first?
Parks Commission is coming up.
Okay, so we'll come back at three oh eight. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, welcome back to the Gigg Harbor City Council Study Session of Thursday, December first, twenty twenty-two. Time is three oh nine P M, and we are on our third agenda item, which is our joint meeting with the Parks Commission. And I want to welcome all of our Parks Commissioners that are joining us today. Thank you for being here, and also our new Parks Manager, Jennifer Harrow, is with us. Welcome, Jennifer, and we also have our Public Works Director, Jeff Langhelm. Welcome, Jeff. Um, I think. Josh, I'm gonna turn it over to you for a roll call, and then I'll just kind of let you take it from there unless you. Need me to interject.
Yeah, I can, I, I'll do the roll call and I'll introduce this and uh.
Great.
We'll let, uh, let council hear from our Parks Commission Chair, Ben Coronado, for a little bit, and I'm sure Jennifer will weigh in too, and we'll go from there.
Sounds great.
All right, uh, let's see. So Commissioners, we have with us our Chair, uh, Ben Coronado.
Here.
Um, sorry, I'm having a little bit of screen difficulty here. Uh, Louise Timon, I don't believe was able to join us today. Les McCollum, I haven't seen, seen him be able to come on either today. Will Appleton is here. Stace Gordon. Uh, Stephanie Lyle also uh is traveling today, I believe, and so she wasn't able to make it. Um, and then we also have a vacancy on the Parks Commission that we have an applicant for, um, that we are ready to move forward with. Um, we should be able to announce that uh here in the next few days, so. Thank you to those of us, those of the Commissioners that could join us, um. So the reason we wanted to get on council's agenda for a joint meeting today with both the Parks Commission and the Arts Commission is because uh both of these commissions have been working on. Uh, work plans to kind of guide what they're, what they want to be focusing on for the next couple of years. Um, we've timed both of these work plans to be ready, kind of in conjunction with the new two-year budget cycle. Um, so as we go, as we look at the Parks Commission work plan, you'll see that there's a number of items on there that are kind of tied in. Um, to the, to the budget. So I think what I will do right now is just bring up the work plan, just to kind of introduce that to council. Um, the plan for both of these work plans is to put them, uh, put them in a resolution format and bring them to council for. Approval at the next council meeting. Um, this is just a chance to show you what's on there and have you let us know what questions you have or what ideas you might have for the commissions to work on. Um, so without further ado, I'm gonna bring up the Parks Commission work plan, and I will introduce it shortly and just kind of touch on a few things, and then I'll hand it over to Ben and he can. Elaborate on some stuff that they were working on and some uh other, whatever else he wants to bring to your attention as well there. So this is the work plan. This uh work plan is basically just a summary of what the Parks Commission is interested in doing and hoping to do over the next couple of years. Um, we've got it broken up into three sections. And the first section is on the parks, uh, budgeted parks operating goals. Each of these checkboxes should be familiar to council from our, our budget discussions because these are taken straight from the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget that we just approved. Um, so I don't spend a whole lot of time on them, but it's basically keeping up with what's in the pros plan, um, working on park standards. Uh, developing open space management plans. Um, trail development, which is a, a big part of the uh operating plan, operating goals in the budget. Um, ADA access will be an issue uh that staff is looking at um over the next couple of years. And then the recurring one, this last checkbox has been in our budget for a few years. It's developing the recycling program in city parks. Um, that's one that's been on our plate for a while that, that I think the Parks Commission is eager to get into. Um, the second section is the uh more capital project stuff that was in the budget uh for the next two years. Of course, that sports complex phase one B, which Parks Commission will play a big role in. Um, Gig Harbor North Trails, the Cushman Trail Connection, the Hubbard V Drive. Um, Crescent Creek Park, that master plan, that's gonna be a big focus of the Parks Commission. Mission, Shaw Park Analysis, Cushman Trail Phase Five A, as we uh proceed forward with that. Um, and then Sports Complex Phase Two, when they get into the scoping and conceptual design. Um, so all of those things are things that you've already seen in the budget that'll be part of our, our uh Parks Commission's work plan. And then the last four, these are the ideas that the Parks Commission has that they've been wanting to, to take on or have been working on in, uh, in the past. Um. So these are develop the data collection systems and evaluation tools that the Commissioners use. Uh, this will be coming up with a public platform. Um, I see Jeff, you have your hand raised?
Oh, I just, I'm sorry, I just wanted to uh note that in the previous section to. The Gig Harbor Sports Complex Phase Two Scoping and Conceptual Design is now Phase Three feasibility study per the approved budget.
Yeah. Yes, that, that's the most recent change to the budget, yeah. Um, another item on the Parks Commission's to-do list is to create an inventory of trails, walking routes, waterfront access and other park features. Um, and kind of keep exploring ways to provide that access to the public. Um, Parks Appreciation Day, of course, is one of the, one of the big things, and then uh recommending names for recently acquired. Conservation properties and new trail systems, and this will be something I think that, um, with council's direction that I want to take on pretty quickly. Um, getting a formal name in place for all those conservation properties that we've now closed on. Um, so with that, uh, I can hand it over to you, Ben, if you want to provide some comments and.
Sounds good. Uh, hi, Council, Mayor and members of staff. Um, happy to be here with other members of Parks Commission. Uh, present to you our, our draft work plan for the coming two-year cycle. Um, it's a, it deviates a little bit from previous work plans in that previous work plans uh were one year and this one was amended to be a two-year plan. In hopes that uh we could achieve more of the items on our work plan and it kind of coincides with the budgetary cycle. So the thoughts on that were that they would kind of run hand in hand and uh. And we'd be able to develop some of these um to fruition, uh, to completion. Um, I know that had been an issue on previous work plans that um were proposed in, in length. Um, I, I remember in years past, very lengthy work plans with a year time span and. I, maybe a quarter of it would get done and it would just lay over, lay over, lay over on, on a lot of these items and, and so we. Present a very abbreviated work plan in hopes that, you know, more than most of this will get accomplished, um. It is, um, some of these are from previous work plans. Um, the recycling program, as Josh mentioned, has been around and about for many years. And so that's definitely something that we hope, you know, the council has shown interest in before and that we hope that we could really help uh formalize and, and. Create a program in, in some manner to, in our parks. Um, let's see what else. This is something we've been working on for four or five months or so. We've had discussions about um during our meetings and um. And what we think, what we, we heard from the public, uh, particular from the um. Uh, the outreach that we did for the uh Parks Recreation Open Space Plan, um, that we, that council adopted at the beginning of the year. We did a lot of outreach to the community um for that process and. Um, what we heard back from the community was in relation to a lot of these things that show up on our work plan. Um, in addition to previous meetings with council and, and previous work plans, so it's kind of a. Conglomeration of all those items together, um, is. in addition to all of the conversations that we had as a commission, um, is how we got to this final draft for you. Um, and we certainly will entertain any input from you as well to adopt into it as well, or there's any changes or questions, we'd be happy to answer. And if any other Parks Commissioners want to jump in, feel free to raise your hand or jump in there. Um, so Josh already kind of went through each item that we had on there. But yeah, I was just going to elaborate just a little bit more. Like you said, the new acquisition on the um, conservation projects on this conservation properties, the naming of that, I know that in particular, that one is a Parks Commission uh, task. It's laid out in the uh, Commission bylaws. Pretty sure that's still in there. Uh, Parks Appreciation Day is one that we've done annually and would like to continue continue to see. Um, this last one, I think a lot of real nice projects were completed. Um, if you haven't had a chance to go through the Holly Forest that at Wilkinson Farm Park, that's looking in particular quite well. Um, I know a lot of work went into that one. So I I think that's a really good one that we like to focus on as a Parks Commission and and supporting that. Creating the inventory of trails, walking routes, waterfront access that that comes, I think, directly from the pros plan, um, outreach and and connectivity and wanting, you know, more trails throughout our community. The develop the data collection system and evaluation tools um, for use by Parks Commissioners, staff and residents. That uh, is something we tossed around a little bit. Louis Teeman, one of our Parks Commissioners, the Vice Chair, had actually developed a uh, Google Data Sheets and that we each each Parks Commissioner was assigned a half a dozen parks and we each went out and we kind of evaluated each park to create a baseline of where we're at. And in the hopes that in an annual process, we could kind, we could we would develop a okay, where are we at? You know, uh, kind of a snapshot for each year for each park. So that's um, a tool that we've already created, maybe um, could formalize more. But I know Josh in previous meetings had explained that there's also a new what was the name of that program you guys started, Josh? Remind me on that.
The the See Quick Fix Program, that's our our new system for reporting concerns throughout the city, not just for parks, but for really any kind of public facility.
Right. So thinking that could also help in that whole process. I do see some hands up, so I'm going to take a second here and address those. Uh, any meaning, I know you, I don't know whether first Roger, you're unmuted. Councilmember Henderson.
Yeah, thanks, Ben. Um, can you amplify a little bit on the Shaw Park Analysis and Remediation? What is sort of uh, behind that and what might be envisioned?
I know that comes from, you know, the the current standards of Shaw Park. Um, I'm going to let Jeff dive into that a little more as he might have a bit more knowledge than me on that one, but I'm happy to tell you what I know, but I know Jeff knows a lot more than I do for sure.
Uh, thank you, Ben. Yeah, the city has heard for many years since uh, that park was open, that the subgrade, the soil, the lawn uh, is in really poor condition. And so the idea is to bring somebody in that can analyze the soil, look to see if there's an uh, reasonably effective, easy way to amend it and uh, make it so that it can be used more than just a month or so a year, because it's it's wet during the winter and then when we start to irrigate it, it gets wet and muddy when we irrigate it. So uh, of course, we all know the topsoil was taken off to construct the site and uh, then it was left with glacial till and then when the developer constructed the facility, uh, it really uh, was done at a level that we would wish it would have done. Wish it would have had more topsoil amended and a better drainage system installed.
So is there going to be any kind of visioning process for that particular park or we're just trying to fix the soil and sort of leave it as is?
At this point, what the item was intended to do was just to fix what was there.
And that was a topic of conversation, actually, in that that would probably be in the next budgetary cycle, and so that would probably be in the next work plan proposed. So that's kind of where it fell on that one, um, because it was one of the original items and it did get pushed out because it didn't kind of fall in line with the budget.
And we are interested to see if the next portion of the Shaw Park is going to be developed with the development of Village and Harbor Hill. So it's 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 in some ways good to wait and see because we can know just how much and what Shaw Park will look like once it's fully developed. Fully established.
Yeah, that was the property that the developer was at least planning on donating that's adjacent to it.
Correct.
Okay.
Councilmember Roderick. Yes, thank you. Um, my question is probably for Jeff because Ben will kick it over to him anyway. No. Um, I'm wondering about the Adopt a Park program that was developed by the Commission several years ago and passed by council, but then was put on hold for various reasons. Are we still on hold for that? Or is there a reason you guys didn't include it on the work plan or just wanted to get kind of an update on that?
Yeah, I'll happy to jump in here. Um, Ben, correct me if there's anything you know differently, but uh, it's in the hands of city staff at this point to uh, rectify any issues that maybe they're based on some comments we've received from the union and it just hasn't uh, been able to be addressed yet.
Okay, I would obviously, I'd love to see that happen for community engagement reasons that we've all already talked about in previous meetings, but I'll just keep bringing it up now.
Good reminder.
Um, and as far as I know, there is, I think we have, I've asked this before and just mentioned that there is a task list already in place too. Um, for the partners who join us for that program, so last little hurdles hopefully, and then we'll get that program in place.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Roderick.
Yes, hi, Ben. Um, this uh, work plan, even though you've shrunk it down to fit on one page, surely contains a lot of work. And I'm wondering, it doesn't look like it's in any priority order. I like to see it in priority order in what you're going to attack first or go after to complete first. And once that's you have a priority, I'd be quite interested in updates, uh, you know, maybe monthly updates of where we are achieving some of these things on the work. Uh, and and the point is not to check your work. The point is to see how can council, how can the city help you better achieve everything you've got on here, because it really going to take a partnership to complete all this. So I would like to see it prioritized and and redistributed. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So I think the prioritization was actually to come after this meeting um, to get a better idea of what you felt your priorities were from this work plan. So if you had, you know, any preference as to what you felt should be prioritized, feel free to offer it. But also that um, as the budget got adopted and as city staff came forward with the um, task from that budget, we would coincide with that so that we had the flexibility to work on these items as it came forward with city staff. And correct me if I'm wrong in any part of that, Jeff, or other members.
I'll I'll just jump in really quickly, but the priorities, well, first to Councilmember Roderick's point as far as updates. Um, the first two sections there, those are taken directly from the budget, so the so at a minimum, the quarterly budget of reports that you get from city staff will address each of those and let you know where we're at. Um, as far as progressing on those throughout the year. So at a minimum, you'll get that. Um, as the Parks Commission works on things, we can do staff reports either from myself or from Jeff or Jennifer on on specific things and how they're going. Um, one of the things about commission work plans, and this will apply to all the commissions and the Arts Commission as well as the the prioritization um, is really, I mean, it's it's largely up to council, but it's also kind of a staffing issue. So it's going to depend on, you know, what other things our staff are working on um, and what time we have to commit to it. Um, so it's a little difficult to put it in a priority order at this point. But once we get it adopted and know what it is, then we can kind of look at our work plans for the year and see what what's there. Um, and so that's why these are checkboxes and not numbers necessarily. So there there will be prioritization, it just won't show up on the work plan that's adopted formally by council if if that makes sense.
But I know in previous years, there is some method of prioritization in previous work plans, so I can see why you might like to see that, because that in previous formats was presented out in that format.
Thank you, Councilmember Wook.
Yes, thank you. This is quite an ambitious plan. And I'm excited to see what, how it moves along. I'm excited for those quarterly budget updates. Um, and I'm I'm happy to see that it has coincided with our budget. I think that makes a lot of sense. Uh, when there was a previous uh, Parks Administrator, I I gave that, um, I I gave him uh, contact for the Washington Trails Association. And if if anyone is interested, those folks will come in for free and walk over a space, any space that we want them to look at off of Burnham Drive, wherever we want them to look at, and they will come back to us with um, a a plan and uh, for free of what a natural trail might look like in an in an area like that. And uh, if there is a cost and uh, Washington Trails Association can sometimes often provide volunteers to help with those natural trails. So uh, just want to put that out there. Um, and um, it's a good, should you decide to do that, it's a it's it's an interesting conversation that you might want to have with those folks. So good luck on this and I I'm looking forward to those quarterly budget updates and seeing what's going on. Thanks for all your hard work.
Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Lakens.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Um, I just echo Jenny's comments about the trail partners. That's sounds amazing and then just support for all of the hard work that all of you are doing. Um, to kind of tag on to Councilmember Roderick's comments and with what Jeff and Josh and everyone has said. Um, as far as like doing a priority, what would be really kind of neat to see and and maybe this is what you're envisioning is not just a number priority, but maybe a calendar timeline of okay, here's our two years, here's where we're focusing, here's where we're focusing. And of course, those are goals, you know, things happen however it works. But I know within our budget, we put it in a certain year or something, you know, this is the year that this conceptual design and planning, that'd be really helpful visually so that we can make sure we're on task with how things are progressing across. But just an idea, but this looks great. This is, yeah, exciting stuff. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Roderick.
Yeah, well, I Jeff's points well taken about uh, coordinating priority with staff availability. Uh, but one of the projects on this list is is close to me. And I think it's uh, it's Crescent Creek Park, where we're going to be doing community outreach, we're going to be doing visioning. And uh, everything I've heard up until now is, and I agree with, is it's going to be somewhat passive. There's not going to be a lot of constructions, there're not going to be play fields, it's going to be a a passive park where you could put up you know, a volleyball net and or pickup football game or parents playing frisbee. Uh, those kinds of things. We don't have a huge open space like that anywhere in the city. So I'm thinking to complete that part is low cost, lower cost in comparison to other projects. And way I think it should be prioritized is because the visiting process and these community outreach takes so long, you know, they're two months, then we have this, we have to look at what we looked at. And then we have to go back and we got to talk about it. But those are uh, even though they're time consuming in their their meetings, I don't think they take a lot of staff to coordinate that. I I could be wrong, uh, but I think that's something that uh, since it's going to take so long, we should get started on. And I think we could get a success out of it in as much as it's low cost, not a lot of construction. And and we could get to a happy place with it. So, thanks.
Thank you. In the interest of time, Ben, did you have anything else that you wanted to add or or Josh, did you, Jennifer? Um, anything to add for for us before we?
Uh, Mayor, there's one thing we can take up right now with council, and that's been uh, proposed. I think Councilmember Denson's mentioned it, and we've talked to some other council members, but the very final um, item on the list, the recommend names for recently acquired conservation properties. Um, I think there's interest from council to come up with a formal name for the three properties or maybe the two properties. I'm not, I'm not quite sure the direction council wants to go with the naming for that. Um, but the process for park naming that we have in our uh, policies is that council will direct us to go out and find a name for a park. Um, that's a public process initially, so we'll go out and solicit the public and say, hey, we have these properties, we're coming up with a name for them, what are your ideas? And then we take those ideas to the Parks Commission and the Parks Commission comes up with its recommendations for council to finally approve. So if there's direction from council, we can start that process now and and start uh, getting the word out and coming up with with ideas and and have the Parks Commission come back to you down the road, uh, not too much, not too long, I would hope and have some recommendations there.
All all the heads are nodding, so I think that's consensus.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Roderick.
Yes, on on the last piece of property we acquired having to do with the naming, a part of the negotiations at last counselor, when we were uh, giving our approval for the cost and the pricing moving forward, was that the owner wanted it reserved naming rights. And I never heard whether that was taken out of the final contract or not. So is that something we need to consider? Uh, Jeff, I'm sure you have the answer to that. Thanks.
Uh, yes, I actually Jennifer is working on that right now as we speak, and we're getting emails during this meeting about that. So maybe Jennifer, you want to give a quick update on that?
Yes, the uh, attorney for Mr. Shaw reached out to us and we are, we have a meeting set up for them later in December. Um, with Danielle Kenny is going to come as well. Um, and Jeff and I. So um, we will keep you posted on how that is, but we're not exactly sure, we haven't received guidance from them on what they want, but it it did make it into the purchase and sale agreement that there would be um, an agreement of some kind um, at closing, which did not happen. So we're going to determine steps forward with that. We did provide them a map of the area. So we'll keep you posted on how that conversation goes.
Thank you. And just a reminder that that uh, properties that were acquired under with that uh, condition is only uh, a portion of the properties that we acquired. So um, and when it comes to naming a park, I just want to remind council that um, that those properties, they are owned by the city. Uh, not all of them yet are in conservation, though that's the direction we're going. Um, we're not calling that a park yet. Uh, it's not uh, approved through land use approvals as a part as a public park. It's still all designated as I believe residential. So um, that's just something to keep in mind as we move forward in this process that we're naming the area. I don't know if we're going to be calling it a park yet. Thanks.
Great. Okay, well, thank you so much, Commissioners for joining us and it's nice to see you all. I wish we could have been in person, but hopefully better weather next time and we'll see you all soon. Thanks again and have a great, great evening.
Thank you.
And uh, Josh, uh, I guess we'll go ahead and start bringing over planning Commissioners. I think there's a few in attendees so far.
Yes, we have some arts Commissioners online. We'll bring them over right now.
I'm sorry, I think I keep saying planning. I'm sorry, I have the wrong commission on my mind today. Hi Lynn, welcome, Arts Commissioners. Thanks so much for joining us today.
Hi, hi, everybody.
Hello. Appreciate your flexibility, everybody. Switching to virtual, we weren't we weren't quite sure. And now now it says it might snow at four and temperatures are going down, so I just wanted to make sure we were all safe, so.
Thank you.
Good to see you all as you're coming on here. Hi Charlie, welcome. Hi Collette.
Hello, Mayor. Good to see you.
Good to see you as well.
My apologies for not letting you. My apologies for not letting you see me. And this is Robin. I had dental surgery yesterday and
Oh.
Oh. It's, yeah, I'm okay to talk, but um, I'm not too pretty to look at, so.
Well, I think we can all relate in some form or another, so I hope you feel better soon. Thank you for being here and in spite of that, I hope you feel better soon.
Thank you, but I I'm I'm fine. I'm actually feeling pretty well, like I said, but.
I have some saltwater taffy, Robin. Would you like?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, that'll work. Oh, thank you, yeah, that'll work.
Oh.
You're mean.
At least you all can joke with each other.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, I think, um, everybody is over. Josh, if you wanna go ahead and do, um, a roll call or introduction for the arts commissioners that are here today?
Sure, yep. I can do the roll call and then I'm gonna hand it over to Tiffany. Tiffany's been staffing the Arts Commission primarily the last few months, so. I'm gonna turn it over to her to give an introduction and then we'll hear from Charlie, I'm sure, so. Um, just, uh, rep work, I'll do the roll call. We have Charlie Glock Jackson, who's the Chair of the Arts Commission. And Robin Avney, who's the Vice Chair. Uh, Dan Bosic is on the commission. I don't see he's able to attend today. Uh, Jennifer Beard is here. Colette Smith. Lynn Stevenson.
Here.
And Sonia Johnson. And with that, I'll hand it over to Tiffany.
Thanks, Josh. Hello Mayor, Council. Um, let me share, let me pull up the work plan here. Okay, can you guys see that okay? I can make it bigger. Is that okay?
Yep, I can see it.
That's great for you Tiffany.
So, um, you can see that the, um, the Arts Commission work plan, they've been working on it, like Josh said, over several months now. Fine tuning, discussing, um, and they have their plan set up into basically five buckets. Uh, creative and economic vitality, the public arts and community design, education and engagement, spaces and places, and culture and heritage. And then within those five buckets, uh, the commission has identified several specific ideas or, um, actions that they feel they can accomplish that will help further their goal of arts in the community. Um, so I believe Chair Glock Jackson is here. I think she can speak. I, I'm not sure. Or Vice Chair Avney also volunteered.
Yes.
Yeah, hey Charlie, can I just add one thing before you jump in there, which is, I wanted to say that these five buckets that we have, they align with our cultural plan that was recently, um, adopted. So there, so we specifically align these goals under, um, under the cultural plan, um, headings. Also, I'll say that what we have on here for our action items, that we have many more action items that, um, are on this, on this plan, but we put the ones that we felt were our priorities on here. Okay, Charlie, I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
We are sipping from the same teapot as you.
Of course, as we are, always are.
And, um, I would simply add that the, uh, um, plan that Robin is referring to is the arts and culture comp plan element that, um, many of you current council members were instrumental in approving. And once again, we have tremendous gratitude to all of you for, um, seeing the importance of having an arts and culture element in the city's comprehensive plan. So, um, I, I think that there, uh, I think that our goals and our, um, our little buckets are fairly clear. Um, I guess I would ask first, are there any questions on any of them? Or would you prefer that we just go one by one, uh, bucket by bucket and, um, uh, discuss each piece? I will leave it to council to give me leaders, leadership on this, guidance.
Tiffany, can you see hands raised or would you, you wanna call in on first?
Okay, Councilmember Barber?
Sure, thanks. Um, Charlie, I wonder if you could just address the first, um, bullet about convening and hosting an open meeting? Is that for sharing or what's the purpose of that meeting? It sounds really interesting and I hope there's a lot of participation in it, but I wanted to know what it was, what the problem you're trying to solve is, kinda thing.
Well, Charlie, I can take that one if you will, cuz that, that relates to the creative district. A couple of years ago, before the pandemic, if we all remember that, um, we did have an open, a very large open meeting um, at one of the boathouses where, um, we had from the Washington State Arts Commission, the, uh, Director of the Creative Districts come down and talk. And there was a certain amount of interest at that time. The program was just new. I should full disclosure, I'm also on the Washington State Arts Commission as well, on their executive council. Um, and we had them come down and we invited all of these different people to the room and many showed up. Because of the pandemic, a lot of it was put on hold, but if you move forward, the, the creative district programming has not, it's been a huge success. It's supported by, uh, Governor Inslee and, um, and is getting popped up all over the state. Originally, some of the impressions were, oh, this is just for communities that are suffering, which is not the case since now, um, Bainbridge Island is now has a creative district status, as Mercer Island is also going for one as well. And Port Townsend, um, which, which is, um, as you know, a great arts community is also has received creative district status. So, um, it, it shapes itself to the community that it's serving. And this action to convene everybody is we would like to get them together again. And we are, um, and hope to, uh, see if we can get the plan moving again. At the very least, to get us all talking about the creative community that we think Gig Harbor is. Charlie, did you wanna add anything to that?
Um, only that we are, um, at our next, um, uh, Arts Commission meeting, excuse me, which happens um, next week, I believe. Um, we, Robin has, um, graciously invited a representative from the Creative Districts, um, division of the State Arts Commission to address the Arts Commission and we are planning to invite a number of the groups that you have, uh, that you see here on your screen mentioned.
As well as the council, if you would like to.
As well as council, yes. Um, to just sort of begin, rebegin the conversation about creative districts and how that could apply, uh, to Gig Harbor.
Okay.
So Mary, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Lee, I see that you have your hand raised.
Yeah, I, I don't know whether we decide to go.
I'm sorry, what? I think that you need to, famous Zoom words, unmute.
You cannot hear me now?
Okay, now we can hear you.
Now we can.
All right. Uh, I'm not sure whether we decide to go bucket by bucket or not, but there are, I admittedly don't know everything, uh, that the Art Commission is responsible for, but there are two items on here. Uh, each, the same one in two different buckets and I'm curious uh, how this particular task, uh, fits into the Arts Commission. And my question is purely innocently, uh, I have no dog in the fight, so to speak, but why is it that the Arts Commission is involved in the planning, uh, or master planning of a park, uh, Crescent Creek Park? And as well, uh, the planning of what happens to the Masonic Lodge. So I appreciate knowing how that fits into your wheelhouse.
I'm happy to, uh, try to answer that question, Councilmember. Um, the, um, one of the tremendous lacks in Gig Harbor is a place for the arts to call home. We have no performance space where a theater group could perform, where, or the nu- the number of, uh, small orchestras that we have can perform, uh, where an arts, um, exhibit can be held. Um, we, we kind of, our, our various art groups in Gig Harbor kind of have to go wherever they may be able to find space, to have an art show, to ha- to perform a concert, um, to have a dance performance. And the, um, the arts, it, one of our, um, goals in our comprehensive plan is to support, um, the finding and perhaps even creation of an art center in Gig Harbor. Um, so, a- and one of the possible uses for the Masonic Lodge would be as a small art center where orchestras could perform, where there are, could be art shows or art workshops open to the public. Um, small dance performances, small theater performances. Um, that is a potential use, we think, um, of the Masonic Lodge. So, that's the reason that we are, go ahead.
Is that like, uh, the entire building would be dedicated to the Arts Commission or just one of the uses would be uh, the Arts Commission's shows as you've just described? Or do you think that builders dedicated to, uh, the Arts Commission?
Well, it's not the Arts Commission per se, it's the arts community, I think would be a better way to phrase it. Um, and I would also add that this is also where the creative district planning comes in because if you're creative district, you're also then have open to state funds for rehabilitating existing properties to apply for grants that way. So, I think that also adds, adds a layer of interest for us as well.
Thank you.
Did that answer your question, sir?
Yes, it did, thank you.
Yeah, and did you have another question? Councilmember Rodenberg? I think you said you had a couple of questions.
Well, just the two items, uh, you have two buckets considering Crescent Creek Park. Uh, so you answered both the questions, thank you.
Okay, um, Councilmember Lickens, I see your hand raised.
Yes, hi, thank you. Um, if you could, I was just gonna suggest maybe just if, because we have limited time, if you could just give your highlights of the different bullet points and then maybe we could discuss after unless council wants to do it differently. Just so we make sure we have time to go over the entire thing, um, if that's okay with council. So, just a suggestion. Thanks.
All right, we can, we can certainly do that. And, um, Robin, let's just, um, both jump in on this one. We want, I would start by saying, one of our priorities coming up, um, very soon, first of the year is to put out our call for entries for our Creative Endeavor Grants Program for 2023. Um, again, thanks to council for, um, approving that portion of our budget.
Absolutely.
Um, this is one of the, I think, one of the most important programs that the Arts Commission is doing, um, has been doing for the last three or four years now. And again, it's uh, thanks to council for, um, giving us enough money in our budget that we can help small, local creative groups and individuals, um, do create, bring creative experiences to our community. So, excuse me, so that's uh, number one that we're gonna be working on very early next year.
Yes, and I would add to that, that it's been an amazing program as, as we've seen over the years now. The, uh, applications become more inventive, more creative. We've increased the applications that we get. Um, it's, it's been very successful in the community. A lot of good feels.
Right. We've had everything from band performances that we've helped, um, poetry readings, um, poetry walks, um, uh, art in schools, um, just a, a wonder, a, a scavenger hunt for art. A wonderful, um, variety of creative experiences that we've been able to support, to bring to the community.
Uh, and I'd say, oh, I'm sorry Charlie, and I'd say in this first creative economy of vitality that this, uh, aside from the grants, that the second priority would be the community arts and beginning to have dialogue as we talked about in bullet point one.
Right, agree. Um, we also, uh, a- as some of you may recall, some of you council members may recall, uh, as part of our, um, research that we did for our, putting together our, uh, arts and culture element, we had a survey, we did an online survey uh, to gauge the interest and the support and the enthusiasm within our Gig Harbor community for the capital A arts, arts in general. And we discovered that there is tremendous enthusiasm for any kind of artistic activity. Many people identify as artists, whether that's as painters, dancers, photographers, um, theater people, cooks, um, seamstresses, people that work with fiber art. Um, there, there's a, there's a really strong and vibrant artistic community in Gig Harbor. And, uh, that our survey showed us that, but it's been several years since nineteen, 2018 that we took that survey and we think it's important to, um, kind of tap into the pulse of the community once again and do another survey, um, of the community and of also our business community. Uh, just to see, uh, if the enthusiasm for the arts has changed. I would suspect that because of our, um, remarkable population increase, um, we're going to find that we have even more support for arts and culture activities. Uh, any questions on the creative and economic vitality bucket? Jenny, Councilmember Wook?
Thank you, thanks for all this work. I know that our community is really loving those endeavor grant projects and I don't wanna leave out the writers. I must say that, uh, in Gig Harbor, the writers and the writers conference is really coming full circle and and growing. That's a, that's a group of people that I hadn't, I had no knowledge of whatsoever and I'm really happy to see them out there. Um, so thanks for all your hard work. I hear from our business community that they need the most help during the shoulder seasons of the fall and the spring. And as you go forward, I mean, one, as I dream about things, there are lots of things that I think our community could be a destination for and I think arts are one of them, uh, and sports and arts and and I, I'm wondering as you, as you go forward, if there's any way, uh, if you have any plans or if you have any conversation, uh, looking at I, action item number one, how to bring in our business communities and help, um, during the shoulder seasons.
I, Jimmy, that's, I'm sorry, Charlie, you wanna go ahead?
No, uh, well, I was just gonna say that one of the, um, um, requests that we uh, put forward in our call for creative endeavor grant applications is we, we try to give preference to activities that will take place in this shoulder season. Um, uh, un- unlike the, uh, or I guess sort of like the, um, the LTAC grants. We don't focus entirely on, um, the shoulder season, but we do ask our creative endeavor grant recipients to at least consider putting on their activities other than, sometime other than in the summer.
And Jenny, yeah, thank you, um, Charlie. And Jen, Jenny, I would add to that that, um, one of the things that we're looking at is some of the activities that these groups are doing, the larger groups and how we can facilitate that. And I'll give an example. Um, the Peninsula Art League, Colette Smith, who was on our council, uh, is on our commission, is president of that. And many of us are members of the art league. Um, and what we are looking at, they just went through a strategic plan and they're looking at maybe, uh, sponsoring a retreat this year where we could bring people in, in the off shoulder season for some sort of artistic creative retreat. So that's one way that, that we're beginning. I think as Charlie so well puts it, we wanna help facilitate this, we don't wanna run it. Right? We don't wanna run the retreat, but we wanna work with all these groups to think of ways that we can help build those types of opportunities.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, I Did that answer your question, Councilmember? Okay, good, yeah.
So I think we kinda answered the Crescent Creek Park question, uh, Charlie, so, um, and then maybe we should look at the, uh, education and engagement.
Okay, right. Well, I don't want to lose sight of the harbor, of our project.
Oh, yes, please, not, yes.
That's one, that's one that's very near and dear to, uh, many of our hearts, especially that of Commissioner Stevenson.
Yes, she's been amazing.
Oh, yes, and if you have walked through, um, the Grandview Forest Park, even in the last week or two. You will have seen the wonderful carvings that Arts Commission funds have added to old snags and stumps in, and fallen logs in the, in the, in the park there. We just finished one, Commissioner Stevenson Lynn, would you like to give a real quick? Shout out to the, the latest one?
Yeah, the latest installment is actually two locations in Grandview Forest Park, two stumps that we had. One was on the outside perimeter of the park near, near the second installation from 2020. And then another one is in, on the interior of one, off one of the park trails. Yeah. So if you haven't seen them yet, I don't know if everybody on this council is familiar with the Harbor Arbor Art Project. But it came about as a result of having, the city had to take down some trees that were suffering from root rot. And what was left behind were snags of various sizes. And so the Arts Commission created the Harbor Arbor Art Project in the hopes that we could find snags in other parks, but it's turned out that Grandview Forest was the, was the one park that was really affected. And so it has the most opportunities for this kind of art project. And we now, so we now have, this year was the, let me see, the the fourth year, and we have five different sites within the park. And within those sites, there's nine different snags or stumps that are carved. And we hope to continue doing that, one, one installment every year.
I would add that Commissioner Stevenson mentioned that so far, we've only been able to use Grandview Forest as our canvas, if you will, for this project. We are, we've asked the Public Works Department that when, and the Parks Department, when the trees have to be cut for the sports complex, if they would please leave some snags for us that, into which we could incorporate carvings to expand the Harbor Arbor Art Project into the sports complex too. Just remind people that arts are just as important as sports are. That's my soapbox.
And can I make one more? Regarding Councilman, Councilmember Rodenberg's question. I wanted to piggyback on that comment about the Masonic Lodge, but regardless of what happens to the Masonic Lodge, I think the Arts Commission would like to be involved in any areas around the city where art could be incorporated. And when, you know, with the master planning happening, the Masonic Lodge would be an amazing location for the creation of arts and all that, but the park itself might have opportunities for art, and that could be Harbor Arbor Art as well. I don't know, we have Jeff Samodowski's beautiful, amazing sculpture that you probably all know. In fact, Jeff was the carver who did our last two installments for the Harbor Arbor Art, but there may be other artistic opportunities within that park that could come up if we were part of the discussion.
Right.
And Chair Glock Jackson, just to let you know, we have about five minutes remaining. And then we'll have to move on. I know Councilmember Denson has her hand up. Are you able, would you like to take some council questions at this time?
Oh, sure, sure. I see that Councilmember Rodenberg has his up hand up as well. I can't, I can only see. I can see very few of the, of the council members, so. Please do.
I'll be quick, because I know you're, we're running out of time here. This is fascinating. Lynn, I'm so glad you brought up the carving, the big carving that Jeff did in Crescent Creek Park, because I was looking at that just the other day and thinking, oh, I want more of those in town. Your Harbor Art, all of the smaller carvings are awesome, awesome, awesome. But I'm glad you've got Public Works looking out and thinking about the sports complex, because wherever we've got big trees. If we could do another one of those ornate gorgeous carvings, we don't want to pass up that opportunity. So thank you so much for, for being involved in the parks as well.
Of course, thank you, thank you. Councilmember Rodenberg?
Well, two things, one, I love that carving as well, the one Robin's talking about. Because we're neighbors and every time we walk out our front door, there's that carving. I had the opportunity to watch every step that he took when he was carving it. And it's just beautiful. My question is about the Gig Harbor official song. Is that the one about the moon over Gig Harbor? I have a, I have a recording of that and it's great. Thank you.
Very cool. We're, we've worked with the Gig Harbor High School Band. Till we've given them an actual chart of it. And how, just in one of their concerts, they would perform it. And we're all, we've also been trying to work with the Summer Sounds at Skansy bands to see if maybe one year we can have one of those bands close their show with, with the, the, the moon over Gig Harbor.
Or all of them.
If it's not truly official at this point, then this council should take the opportunity to make it the official song.
It is official, yeah. And we have a chart, I would love to hear a recording of it though, Lee, so.
I think the mayor should have to sing it.
With the council, with the council doing the ooh wah, ooh wahs.
You guys have to be my backup singers and then I'll do it.
And Tracy, you need a feather boa.
That's right. We could really heat up Summer Sounds with that performance, I think.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, well, I know we have to move along. We're also wanting to create an art inventory and then just do an assessment of the existing public art that we have. That's something we've been working on for several years. Let's see, tour the nineteen works of art and the Washington State Arts Commission that are on display in our local schools. And the school song and oh, and then to also in the cultural and here, culture and heritage bucket. To explore the potential to collaborate with the Downtown Waterfront Alliance on the light pole banners art. You may not know, but one of the initial responsibilities of the Arts Commission was the banners that go on the light posts. And that has since been taken over by very capably by the Waterfront Alliance, but we might have some ideas of ways that those banners could be used in, in more creative ways. So that's just a conversation that we want to have. Nothing that we're insisting on or anything, but let's just, we all hold up the same sky. Let's see if we can cross pollinate. So, that's the very quick summary, any other questions?
Any other questions from council? Councilmember Henderson?
Just a quick one on the banners. You know, the light poles are pretty standard throughout the city. It'd be nice to see banners up in some of the neighborhoods. I mean, the Waterfront Alliance has done an amazing job for the downtown area. But there are those of us that live not in downtown and we're also part of Gig Harbor too, so it's a thought.
Wonderful idea, thank you. I will put it on my to-do list, thank you. Any other council questions or comments? Again, thank you. Thank you, council members, for your continued support of the arts. We, we couldn't do it without you. And just for recognizing how very important it is for us to celebrate the creative spirit of our community. Whatever form that might take, so.
Thank you for all you do and for your passion for the community and your willingness to serve our community so well. We really appreciate you all very much and thank you for your service to our, to our communities and, or to our community. And I hope that you all have a wonderful, wonderful evening and we look forward to our, our next meeting with you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Before then, come to the tree lighting Saturday.
Will do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, night.
Okay, so we are on our fifth agenda item, which is our 2022 Active CIP Schedule Update. And this report is from our Public Works Director, Jeff Linghell.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to share my screen here in a second and just get right into the schedule. And kind of just describe projects as we usually do.
And Jeff, do you want questions kind of as we go? Would you like to call on people and, or would you like them to be at the end?
I'm fine if we have questions as we go and I don't mind calling, I'm able to see everybody who's on the screen. First of all, just note that you've probably seen the schedule and realized there's a lot of yellow, meaning a lot of changes in schedules as we sent the last time we discussed this, which was, I believe, October. So a lot has changed, but I'll try and get into some of these changes. So I'm just gonna start off with Skansy Net Shed. If you saw the public outreach matrix that's after this, you probably saw all that's going on. We have found that the structural steel members that are being recommended by the Skansy Net Shed Foundation will work. But we've got to do more structural analysis based on adding steel members instead of wood members. We're gonna be putting together a contract amendment for Helix and then having it on council's agenda in January. But we've been receiving input on the design from Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation, DAP and the Skansy Net Shed Foundation, so that we're all on the same page, which we are at this point. And once we get some revisions made to the design, we can finalize that, bring it forward to the Design Review Board, hopefully soon into 2023 and then move forward with bidding the project. Councilmember Wook?
Yes, thank you, Jeff. So if we use steel inside the building, does that have anything to do with historic? Does that impact the historic preservation of that building?
No, in fact, that's part of the discussion that's been taking place for the past month and a half is how, how that would would it impact the historic preservation? And the Skansy Net Shed Foundation believes that they prefer to have something that drastically contrasts the original style so that you can clearly see what is new and what is not new, what's the original. And DAP supports that based on the part of interior standards.
Good, thank you, good.
You're also gonna go to the Designer Review Board for a certificate of appropriateness, correct?
Yes, yes, that's, that's the main reason we're going to the Designer Review Board later in 2023, or early in 2023. Okay, that's Skansy Net Shed Foundation, Sports Complex Phase One B Design. A lot going on for a one-line calendar item. And we are hoping to submit land use applications in December. That were, as you may remember, that's about two months later than what we had hoped. But we've been having a lot of discussions with the YMCA, their consultant, HBL, our consultant, BCRA. And our city planning division staff about how to proceed forward. Because YMCA has indicated that they may be submitting their application, land use application before the deadline. Which, if you remember in the lease, is June 30 of 2023. So if they're submitting it beforehand and we are moving forward with what we are calling a binding site plan for the entire site. We need to make sure that we have our ducks in a row, because of my understanding is it needs to be a process that's completed in series, one after another. Instead of parallel, meaning running along at the same timeline. So we're gonna know more then. So details in the public outreach matrix, but right now, we, we are likely gonna have to, based on information we just found out at a meeting last week. We may, and this week, we may just be having to push that timeline out a little more. Commercial fishing home port design, we have ninety percent plans and specs. We are looking at some mitigation options to combine with some stormwater outfall resolutions, we're gonna do at the same time, so I might be able to do both of those at the same time. And we're gonna be asking for input from the commercial fishermen soon, so that they can see this, make sure that we're building something that they can use and then move forward with final design and permitting. We have not yet heard back from Army Corps, we're making sure that we have closed all the loops on answering all their questions. And then if we don't hear back from them soon, we're gonna be reaching out to them, wanting to make sure that they have this on their radar. So we can, this, but we're still hoping to be, have everything ready to award a contract spring of next year and be ready for the construction window, which starts July 15, 2023. Any questions on that one? Okay, one thing you might notice is Community Paddler's Dock isn't on here. We finally finished all that. I think there's a weekly update notice, so that's been removed. Moving down to the building projects, electric vehicle charging stations, we still don't have timeline to receive an electric vehicle, so just due to other priorities, the, we haven't installed the charging stations yet. But we're still talking about it. In fact, we need to make sure that we have all of our Peninsula Light Company permitting and design in and ready to go. So that's the next thing we're working on, even though we're not ready to install it. Yes, Councilmember Henderson?
Thanks, Jeff. How long are you gonna need to install them? I mean, I, I know it's like a chicken and egg. We, we're waiting for electric vehicles to put the EV chargers in. But we're waiting to get electric vehicles, or we're not gonna get electric vehicles, because we don't have EV chargers in. If the city were to get an EV and it came in, say, six months or three months. Would there be a significant lag time in saying, okay, let's spin up the EV installation, charging installation? I just don't want to be getting in this cycle where we're waiting for something to happen and we're not doing anything, so something happens.
Sure, no, that's a very good point. We have the charging stations at our operations shop right now. And so really, the only thing we need to do is pull the permit and install the electrical lines to go to where they're gonna be located here at City Hall. So I've been told that that should take less than two months.
Okay, good enough. All right, so let's just make sure that we're not, everybody's waiting on something else to happen, this, I mean, the and let's make sure that we have the infrastructure in place, just to accept it, thanks.
All right, next item was the Bog Visitor Center. As you probably saw in the status update, we are about ready, or we are out to bid, we are hoping to open bids in before Christmas holiday and then awarded the contract at the first meeting in January. And then after that, the work will take place and will be done in time for summer. Okay, Public Works Operations Center, we extended that out a little more because we had some comments back based on the redesign from building and actually they were from engineering. And so we're going to address those and get those turned back around. And we will be hoping, hopefully putting this out to bid in January and then opening bids and awarding it at the first council meeting in February. And then annual payment maintenance, just some minor lingering items sitting there that we need to work through. It's really just very minor, but we keep it on the on the list, because we haven't yet formally received physical completion, which we may receive as early as end of this week. Councilmember Wook? You're muted, Councilmember Wook.
I bring up Burnham Drive just because the roadway there is a little wonky. Will that be repaved there once that they're, they're putting in a gas line, right?
They are, and I have, that one's coming, that one's in my list. Can I wait till I get there?
Yeah, you bet, thank you.
Okay, Mayor Markley?
That was my same question. So I've just gotten a lot of, a lot of questions about whether that road is gonna stay bumpy or not. So we'll get there when you get there.
Okay, next item is the mid-block RFP crosswalk system. We have Fiftieth Street on our to-do list, we have it ready to go, we have survey completed, our staff is ready to work on that. We are prioritizing, looking at either working on Fiftieth Street first or the We are prioritizing, looking at either working on 50th Street first or the. Harbor History Museum driveway entrance first, and I think we're gonna be moving forward to driveway entrance first and then coming back to do the 50th Street. Crosswalk afterwards. Okay, now we're getting into Burnham Drive. So, yes, so. The the project itself is proceeding. I have been told that we now have everything. We've been, we've addressed all the concerns from National Marine Fisheries. So now it's in their hands to. Review it and approve it. Again, similar to the current fishing home port. We're going to let them review it. And then if we don't hear back from them soon, we're going to start make phone calls and make sure it stays high on their priority list. Related to Phase 1A, of course, is the gas main installation that's occurring now. That is temporary asphalt that will not remain as is, but typically when. Construction projects such as that goes in and they're putting a utility parallel to the travel lane. We make them do a complete lane removal and replacement. They're going to do a, what we're talking about, we haven't yet entered into that agreement. But what we're talking about is, and we're just bringing the city attorney into this, is that. If they Puget Sound Energy were to complete their asphalt paving, that would be just a few months possibly before we go in and rip out the roadway. Of course, that's a waste of materials. It looks bad. And it doesn't serve anybody's needs and it causes more delays in traffic just to get the work done. So what we're looking at doing is entering into an agreement with Puget Sound Energy where they will pay us what they were going to spend. To do the paving and we will take that money and apply it towards our project to do the work. Right now, the estimate was just over $130,000, I think, that we would be getting from them. So. None of that's official yet. It's just in concept. And like I said, we have to talk to the city attorney so we can get this finalized and get an agreement in place. Did that answer your question, Councilmember Wook and Mayor Merkley?
Is there a timeline?
For them to complete the the initial paving that they're going to do?
For us to start our work on Burnham and be finished with our work on Burnham so that the road will be finally completed and paved.
That work on Burnham will likely not occur until middle or later in summer.
And 23 and well, 23.
No, it will not finish in 23.
All right.
That that roadway will likely not be completely repaved until spring of 2024.
Thank you very much.
All right, Prentice Fenimore Halfwidth Improvements. We are. Starting conversations with, well, we've started a conversation with property owners. We're gonna finish hopefully the conversation with property owner by the end of December or first part of January. They're moving forward with design and we're on track to finish as you've seen. And then 38th Avenue, Phase Two, we do have a council study session coming up. On December 15, there's gonna be a discussion of the Phase Two Design Permitting. Some alternatives discussions and some ADA impacts bicycle lane discussions. And we're gonna, we've directed the consultant to make sure they have available for us. Some information on. The two alternatives that include how many trees would likely be removed with alternative one, how many trees likely be removed with alternative two and some cost estimates. We're also gonna have a new issue related to the intersection and I'll be looking for council input about. Further work possibly that would be occurring at the intersection of 56 and 38. It's one of those things where we have to do work that intersection either as part of this phase or as part of the Phase 1C, which is on the south side of 56. So. We'll just be ready for that and we'll queue you up for that as it comes closer to the December 15 study session. All right, oh. Next section is water projects. We are proceeding with the water main intertie. We have a draft agreement in place. The city attorney and I and Stephanie have provided comments on that. We're gonna be working with our consultant. We have a meeting scheduled for next Tuesday to talk about that intertie agreement. Washington Water hasn't yet seen the intertie agreement, but in concept. They're on board with doing what they, what their part would be and and then we'll do our part to make this happen. Okay, Reed Drive 55th Street Water Main Improvements. That one will be closed out by next week. It's getting very close and just a couple of minor, real minor items and we'll be done with that one. Okay, wastewater projects. Lift Station Six on Ryan Street. I was told that we just now had the backup generator. Operational, which is not what it says in the public outreach document because that was printed. Last Tuesday, I think. So I think just this week it got repaired or got put online and is now operational. So that's. That's the last big item and we're gonna close that out hopefully. And have that done, it said Monday, but it's gonna be probably next week. And then Lift Station 12 out on Wood Hill, that project is also progressing this week as you will see in our weekly updates. Our wastewater staff and. Our former construction supervisor who was involved in this, George Flanagan, he's out there helping. And doing startup maneuvers. So we have to program the logic controllers and make sure all the equipment works and do tests. And that's about a week-long process and that's been happening all this week. So getting close on that one. Murphy's Landing Marina Navigation Channel dredging, we are proceeding with that. There's been some back and forth with Murphy's Landing themselves about how they want. To dispose of the dredged material. It's not how we originally anticipated. So we're trying to figure out if that's going to cause an impact on any of the permitting. If it's not, if it's just a cost impact, that's up to Murphy's Landing. So we'll maybe more to talk about there or just. It'll be resolving itself. Waste water treatment plant digester, something that Chuck and his crew just haven't been able to get to. So that's being pushed out a little further. No changes on the Stinson Avenue slip lining. The Donkey Creek Daylighting, AKA North Creek Color Removal. I added on here the grant application support, the contract that was just awarded at the last meeting. So. Consultants moving forward with that and we're gonna hope or they're gonna be meeting that deadline for submitting application on February 6. And there's a slip lining of Mountain View Place. That's moving forward slowly. And then other department tasks, utility rate studies. I have just. Started conversations with Ashley Emery so that we can. Get back into that and look at presenting hopefully and. Either end of January or first part of February, get a council study session. With Ashley to talk about the monthly rates and all of the capital projects that are on there and have a more detailed discussion of. What those proposed monthly or rates would look like over the next six years, starting in 2024. All right. And then there's the outreach matrix, which I won't go into, but summary of what we just talked about. Any questions? It's a lot. There's a lot there every time we go through this. Councilmember.
I don't have any questions, but thank you so much. It really helps when people ask us questions, especially Burnham Drive. And some other things. So it's, it's just really nice to be able to have answers. And it is amazing, a lot of work that you and your team does and everyone in the city of Gig Harbor. So thank you so much for taking such good care of of all of us, the citizens. Thank you.
But you're welcome. Councilmember Barber.
I wanted to say thank you too, and it's really, it's really nice to see those projects that are done. So they're going off the list.
It is. It is very nice to see those done. We're working on. Preparing our staffing allocations for next year. I'll put that in my weekly update also. You'll see that. And it's a little overwhelming because we're doing two years worth, but there's still a lot left to do. Councilmember Henderson.
Thanks, Jeff. On Burnham Drive, you're waiting for the permit review from the Corps or both the Corps and Fish and Wildlife?
Well, the application goes through the Corps through a JARPA process. But the Corps reaches out to Fish and Wildlife. You're talking about US Fish and Wildlife? I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, actually, it's the Department of Fish and Wildlife is what's in your update.
Yes, we are. That's a much easier process typically to get through, but we are waiting for final approval for the HP. I don't think they'll give us final approval until we have approval on at every other level.
Okay, so how long have you been waiting on UCIS to get back? When when did you submit it?
Well, we submitted in, I wanna say it was end of September, first part of October, but they had some comments, so we just. Got back to them on that and then in theory they have everything they need. And I have to find out for sure for Marcos when that last middle was, but it was, it's been fairly recent. I mean, it's just been a few weeks, I think.
Okay, a few weeks different. Okay, good. Thanks.
You bet. All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jeff. Appreciate you and your team and all that you guys are doing. Every time I'm driving through town, I see at least. 15 red trucks. I'm waving emphatically and now they're starting to know my car and they're waving back. So it's great. It's great. Thank you for all you're doing. So our sixth item is to talk about a sister city agreement with Milna, Croatia. And this is, this is very brief. The MOU that is in the packet is. Pretty much, I think it's exactly the same as the MOU that we signed with or that I signed with Buddha, Norway. We just. Switched out the the cities and I met with Mayor Lochik earlier in, early in November. And he is extremely enthusiastic about starting this sister city relationship and would like to have a. Joint meeting of our councils, which would end up being somewhere around 8:39 in the morning our time. On a, on a particular day, probably in January. I think he's planning on, this, this is gonna come before you for an official vote, probably on consent at the December 12 meeting, just to authorize me to sign this MOU. With Milna. The group, the the sister city group that's been in operation for, I think, two or two years at least. They met last week and I met with them or on the, I think it was. I've lost track of time with the holiday. I think it was the 23rd we met and. They voted unanimously as a board to form their own 501(c)(3) to be the sister city organization for. The city of Gig Harbor, which is very exciting. And so they're working on. Kind of. A draft contract, things that they would like to see in there. And then we, of course, will. Bring that before council after we've had a chance to go over things administratively and. Lay out what the city's obligations will be and what our role is and what their role will be. But I think this is going to be. Such a good way to go. You know, I know there were some options that were thrown out there originally, like. Forming another commission, like the Arts Commission or the Parks Commission, but. It's very difficult for relationships to happen organically when you are subject to OPMA. You can't talk to each other, you know. And this type of a program really needs those. Relationships to be able to be formed organically. And so this, I think, is the the very best way. They will pretty much be running the entire program with then with approval for events and things like that with the city. And then so. When we come to, you know, come forward with this official contract that we would sign. With this 501(c)(3) and I don't know what they're gonna call themselves yet. They're working on deciding what their name is gonna be and. But their their planned structure is for them to have a board. Consisting of ex officio voting members such as council members that are interested. That would not, they wouldn't be voting members, but they would be on this, the sister city board, if you should be interested in that. So. If you are, please send that information along to me as soon as possible so I can let them know as they're forming their board. They would have community members. I think they're looking for a CPA, an attorney. Just a great group of people to be on their board. And then each country. I believe is how they're planning to establish it, would have their own committee. And so there would be a committee in charge of each sister city country. And so if we ended up having a relationship with both Salsa and Milna, there would just be one committee for that island of of Brat in Croatia. So. I think that they are, well, they are all very excited. And I'm happy that they've come to this decision. I really, I really am because I think it's gonna be great and a really great partnership. So. Really just looking to see if council is excited as well about this MOU and going forward with additional sister cities and. And supportive of the 501(c)(3). So I I'm seeing thumbs and and up and heads. So that's, that's good. Thank you for your support with this. So I'm going to send this MOU draft to. Mayor Lochik so that we can talk it out. He can talk it out with his people and then I will let you know as soon as we come up with a date that works for their council. See if it works for us as well to meet each other, which I think will be super fun. And. Yeah, that's, that's pretty much it. As far as that's concerned, do you have any questions for me about Milna or the process? Okay. Great. Well, thank you so much. I think this is gonna be a really exciting thing. Okay, well, then, Josh, we will go right back to the item number two, our council guidelines and procedures and finish up that discussion.
Very great. Thank you, Mayor. So we got through the whole document and all the changes that were proposed in there. And I guess this is the, at this point, if there's any follow-up questions from council or ideas or further comments, and. I see Councilmember Barber.
Yes, Josh, I'm wondering. The paragraph that starts on page 35. The mayor shall ask for nominations from the council members. Is that? Does that change? If we. Or it it kind of seemed like we're approving this alternate process. Do we ask for nominations after we've had? The. We've chosen the four people to be interviewed. Is this? The nominations on page 35, those are the. Nominations to be considered for the position rather than. Kind of, shall we say, the semifinalists who were the four?
Yeah, so that would be the nominations from the four people that were interviewed. So it would be the one or two or three or. How many finalists from that interview process that you want to to vote on?
Okay. Maybe if you can just, I'm just thinking about as a, as an applicant looking at this, maybe if you could just add a clause in there that says, following the interviews. Or something like the, something like that, so that the four people realize that. There's then another process after that. I think we have to segment it somehow.
Yeah, let me take a look at it and I'll see if I can words something a little clearer in there.
Okay, thank you. We really appreciate your eyes on this as it is a new process. So. You know, we can read it and we really appreciate your eyes to make sure that it makes sense. I think it's a much better process.
Councilmember.
Yes, thank you. I'll go back to the gestures that I would like to see included. In this document and I would, I would like to see it included. This was supposed to be, we were supposed to be including gestures. In this and I I'm thinking that a good spot would be on page five. Under item two. Council members will re, will refrain from. Gestures and intimidating behaviors.
Do we need to be more clear on gestures because gestures are used quite a lot?
Do you wanna say finger gestures? I mean, I don't know. But maybe just inappropriate gestures or offensive. And I would be happy to go with inappropriate or offensive, however, however, we want to use those words. Something needs to be put in there. So if you're looking for me, let's go with. Inappropriate. Is that better?
Is council okay with that? Inappropriate gestures? Mostly head nodding. Okay.
Mayor, may I ask a question? And I think that, Councilmember Wook, that I looked through the. Through this and that's where I was gonna suggest that being added as well. If we're saying inappropriate gestures, I think it's important that we understand. I think we know. Understand what that is. Is it eye rolling too and? Kind of, you know, those things, are those considered?
I think we have eye rolling already in this, in this document. I'm basically. Referring to. I'm basically referring to give. From one council member to give another council member the finger. That's what I'm referring to. That needs not to happen. So. But I think, I think during, I think in this document, somewhere else in this document, we have refrained from eye rolling. We don't have it in here. Nobody sees it in here somewhere.
No, I just did a certain. No, I just did a search and it's not, there's nothing about.
Maybe we could put in parentheses, you know, examples, eye rolling, inappropriate gestures. I don't know, what do you think, Josh?
I think we can put something in there, I think, I think I understand council's intent and I think I can work with Katrina and we can find some language that works there.
Inappropriate hand gestures, if you want to be more specific about, I don't know.
You guys are the specials at wordsmithing, so I, I will leave it up to you.
We'll, we'll surprise you at the council meeting and.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I certainly agree that we should be as civil as possible, but something like what. Administrator Newton just did like, like this or a roll, some of that is, I try very hard to be civil, but some of it's involuntary. I mean, if someone says something outrageous, I, I find myself. Going like this, and I really didn't mean to offend anybody, I just, it's involuntary, it comes so quick, it's not like I. Say to myself, I think I should throw my hands in the air and show disgust, it just bang, there it is, you know, so.
I hear, I hear you.
I agree with having things on paper, but, you know, let's, let's keep some of that in mind.
I, I would agree with that, you know, you all know general discretion, how, how you should behave in a council meeting and, and. And again, these are guidelines that, you know, it's not, you're not gonna get. Called out for throwing your hands up, but just, just, it's more of just an awareness of what you're doing and how you're coming across to your fellow council members and to the public. When you do make those motions and things like that.
Alright, well, if there's no other feedback from council, the other issue that we need to discuss is the, the filling that council vacancy that we'll have. If council's ready now, we can start the process and begin recruiting applications for people that are interested in filling that position. The requirements are the same, of course, as, as the requirements that you all had to be elected as council members, you need to be. A registered voter in the city and a resident of the city for at least one year. If you're ready, we can start. At the process. Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, Councilmember Liggins?
Yeah, thanks, Josh, I just wondered, I don't know if anybody else is interested in looking at the application form again. I can't, you know, just to make sure we get the information we want, or. Do we wanna add any questions to that, or maybe we can just brainstorm that right now, I know it's late in the day, but I just wanna make sure, maybe there's. Some information we could capture on the applications that might help us make some choices, especially if we're gonna be doing all the interviews in one day. So.
Yeah, to be honest, I haven't, I haven't looked at that again since the last time we did this process, and the way the policy's always been written is that we just administratively come up with one, so I think we just. Do a new one each time.
Okay, I, one question, and feel free if others have an opinion on this, that I would like to see. Would be whether or not they would consider running, because it's such a short. Time to be appointed, because they're gonna be appointed in January. And then election is in November, you know, you can't say whether or not you're going to run, but. Because then they get into, okay, I have to declare my candidacy in the PDC rules, et cetera, but would they be open to running? In the future, when the, I don't know if other people think that's important, I, it's just something I've been thinking about and. I'd love to see a longer term commitment.
I, I kind of agree with that. And it was a question that I was asked. But it leaves us, if we put it in the application, it leaves us more questions to ask in the interview besides that one.
Councilmember Runberg?
Yeah, a candidate could say anything they want, depending on what they think we'd like to hear. They may get on council and decide it's not for them, or maybe they've had a lifelong desire to serve on council and this is a shortcut way to get on. So I have no objection to that being on there, their answer. May tell us a lot about them. When we speak to them about their answer, so I, I think it's a good thing to, to put on there, I agree with. Uh, Councilmember Lichen.
Councilmember Wook?
Yeah, I agree with that too, I do like her second suggestion, I think of open, are you open? To running, I like, I like that, rather than having, having. Somebody have to declare at that moment, which gets them into a lot of trouble with the PDC. So, open, I think is good. Thanks for bringing that up, Brenda.
So why don't I send out the application we used last year to you as council members, and then if you have any feedback on that, you can get back to me. The way the council policy is written is it's, it's just pretty much left to the city clerk to devise the application, so I can take feedback from you and I can work with Katrina. And we can come up with an application that we think will, will meet what you need, without having to come back to a council meeting for. One more approval, that's okay. I will try to get that out to you by the end of the day, what, what, what we used last year.
Great. Councilmember Barber?
Yeah, I was just thinking, I think it's important for us to get feedback to Josh as quickly as possible on that. Because if we want the, if we need the applications a week before we meet on January fifth, we're backing up. In the middle of the holidays, and I think it's really important to give people enough time to. Consider this, to talk to friends about encouraging them to do it and that kind of thing, so. Let's, let's not hold up the process a lot, reviewing it, if people can look at it tonight or tomorrow morning and get back to Joshua questions. I would encourage that.
Great, Katrina?
Thank you, Mayor, while we're on this subject, I know Councilmember Henderson has a planned vacation the first week of January, and so. If he is not at this meeting, there will be six or five of you rather than. Six of you, and so I just. Wanted to open up to see if people were comfortable with that, or if we should plan on moving. Moving the date. Backward.
I'm comfortable with it.
Uh, Councilmember Liggins?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think it would be better to have us all there, just because it's, it's a member of our team. But if we can. Yeah.
Councilmember Wook?
I'd like us all to be there, our team.
Um, Councilmember Barber, what, what do you say, cuz, let's see.
Yeah, I, I agree it would be better if we could all be there, I would also. Like us to reach out to Seth, because I know he has a lot of work commitments. So I, I'd wanna make sure that he can be there as well, he's not here today to, to say what those commitments are.
Okay, so if the majority is wanting Roger to be there so that all six of you can be there, then we'll have to think of another day. And we'll reach out to Councilmember Sorsa as well to find out what his schedule is like, and then. Roger, I think you already sent your dates of your trip, right? So we have that, okay.
Yeah, it's the first week of January, so it's. Second, second through the fifth, so immediately after that or immediately before that, I could do it, it's just. I'll be in the middle of the ocean, it's gonna be tough logging in. I'll be in the Bermuda Triangle, actually.
Wow, okay.
Okay, so what, what that will mean is, I believe the first meeting in January, then the council will be a five-member body. And so we'll need to make sure that you all come to that meeting.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Alright, thank you, council, and anything else for, for Josh, for revisions to the council roles and procedures document? Okay.
Mayor, I'd just like to thank Josh for taking on this, the task of putting this together, there's many. Different opinions and he's done an expert job putting this all together in an understandable manner, so kudos to Josh.
Yes, I agree, thank you, Josh, round of applause, we would stand for you if we were in person.
I, I will have this ready for you, we'll have it on the consent agenda for the meeting on the twelfth.
Okay, wonderful. Alright, well, if there is nothing else from council. I say we adjourn early, is there a motion to adjourn?
I make motion we adjourn.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor, say aye. Good evening, everyone. Yes, stay warm, everyone.